Hey, good evening. Welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting, February 3rd, 2015. We'll begin with the salute to the flag, please.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God. (Inaudible).
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Mr. Brassi?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Dentz?
Here.
Mr. Rocker? Here. Okay. Nice crowd tonight. Have a lot of things in our agendas, one of the busier meetings we've had in recent months. That's a good thing, we think. Mr. Gray is getting the sign-in sheet from public comment. So, just a couple of names on the list. For those that maybe aren't familiar with the meetings, the public comment, we do have public comment with the different agenda items, but for just general issues or concerns, this first public comment period is for those types of things. So, the first name on the list, Roland Kenny.
First, I want to thank a few people. I'd like to thank the Greengrass Landscaping. They do Admiral where I live. And Jerry Kenny, the president, volunteered to do Three Arches. I got in touch with Brian Andrews. They got together, and they're very pleased with each other, and he's doing a good job down there. So, I'd just like to thank them for the township. Still a lot of scuff. I get around and townships are getting in EIT because we don't have it. They're putting them in. Like, one town close by us, $4 million in the hole. They put it in. They don't have no, they don't need no tax now. School board won't tax them. Now, I know our board, they're going to be in debt $8 million. And then, plus this place, $17 million. I'm telling you, don't be the last ones. I mean, they all love you. They all, all these board members from other townships want to come down and give you each a hug. But I'm telling you, you're going to get the worst name in the township, in the state. And I'll see why we don't have it, instead of raising these taxes every year. And the seniors want to see what's happening. And when them seats go up, they know what to do. They're not done with. God bless you. Have a good night. See you.
Just for the record, the township hasn't raised property taxes since 1996. Thanks.
(Inaudible) township, school.
Oh, okay, school board. Okay. Yeah, well, this isn't, yeah, we're not school board, so just, okay. All right, thank you. Matthew Nesteruk, the next name on the list.
Good evening, gentlemen. The reason I'm here tonight, before you, is I wanted to introduce myself to you. A couple of weeks ago, I picked up the local paper, and I saw that after the reorganization meeting, there were several vacancies on many committees, which shocked me, quite frankly. I was surprised that people don't volunteer as much as I thought they once did. So, I said to myself, "Well, I'm part of the problem as well. Maybe I should do my civic duty and volunteer for a board, get out, meet some new people." So, I sent a letter in to Mr. Gray for all of you. Chairman Harvey was kind enough to get back to me on that. I appreciate that. We talked a little. You know, I didn't necessarily have specific ideas or anything like that. I just thought that I could help join the conversation. It was a term that is up in December, so I figured if I did a terrible job, it'd be a short period. You guys can kick me off. So, I'm here tonight to ask you to consider me for that committee. The second thing that went through my mind when I saw all the committees was, darn, there's no vacancies on the Township of Falls Authority Board. I work for a local authority. I have for 13 years. I had spoke with Mr. Harvey, and lo and behold, the next day, I pick up the paper, and there was a vacancy now because of a resignation on the Township of Falls Authority Board. I know it's still early, and you guys are going to consider many candidates. That is something that I am very interested in serving on. I'd like to also be considered for that board. Many people don't think about the infrastructure beneath their feet. It's important. Maintaining the infrastructure and reducing wet weather inflow and infiltration keeps the rates down. It's something I want to be part of and help with the solution. The local authority that I work for, we have many of the same challenges that Township of Falls Authority does. Regional problems. The sewer system in particular is something that concerns me. If not taken care of, moratoriums can be put in place, which brings development and redevelopment to a screeching halt. That's just something that I really feel that I'd really be well-suited to serve on that board. So, I just ask that, when the time comes, that you gentlemen consider my application to be put on to that board. I did forward copies of a formal request to you. I don't know if you all checked your email tonight.
We got it.
As well as to Mr. Gray.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to come and introduce myself and ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. Those are the only two names on the list. If anybody else wishes to speak, we'll do township residents first, and then we open up the non-residents, if anybody's interested. Let's see, one hand? Sure.
My name's Matthew Gardner. I put in for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Mm-hmm.
I was just introducing myself. I forgot to sign up on the sheet, so.
That's fine.
Just coming up to introduce myself and thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, we'll move to agenda item number two. This is a sketch plan for McGrath Homes. This would be on the site of St. Joseph's Worker Church and School, the property there on New Falls Road. A sketch plan, for people that might not be familiar, is essentially a presentation by a developer where the board gets a chance to look at what is being proposed, the public gets a chance to look at what's being proposed, a chance to see what's being proposed, questions get to be asked and hopefully answered pretty well. This is not something the board is voting on tonight. This is simply a chance for us to get to take a look at what this particular project, Mr. McGrath, is looking to do. Mr. Hecker is the attorney representing. We will allow for some public comment later on, for people that are, questions, if people have them later on. Board will have some questions, I'm sure, and comments. But again, this isn't something, this is not a final land proposal or preliminary land proposal. This is not something we're voting on this evening, although if the board obviously favors the plan and we think it's a good thing, then, you know, we could certainly move forward at some point in the future. So, I'll let Mr. Hecker go ahead and make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good evening. Tom Hecker, on behalf of John McGrath and Pat Flanagan, the principals of McGrath Homes, are seated over here in the second row. Also in the audience tonight is Monsignor Michael McCormick, who is a pastor at St. Francis Cabrini. As all of you know, St. Joseph's Worker has merged into St. Francis Cabrini Parish. That's been a process that has been ongoing for the past year or so, I guess. And the result of that initially was that, thank you, Peter, I appreciate that, was that St. Joseph's Worker School initially closed, and followed by the announcement that the church will close after June 30th of this year as well. My clients are in the home building business. They have specialized in age-qualified communities throughout Bucks County. Age-qualified, by most definition, means 55 and older. And they've developed a reputation for building communities. A lot of their success has stemmed from the fact that we have an aging population, and people reach a point in their lives where owning a single-family home may not be as desirable as it was when you were younger, and you needed more room to raise your family, because all of us as homeowners know what's involved with that, and that is obviously upkeep and maintenance. And for a lot of people, it gets to a point where you want to spend more time recreational activities or more time babysitting the grandchildren, or whatever the case may be, and not necessarily fertilizing your lawn and doing house repairs and that kind of thing. So, the concept of an age-qualified community has been received extremely well in Bucks County, and just for those reasons, that people like the communal atmosphere of people living with people similar in age and similar in interests, and without a lot of the responsibility that goes along with individual home ownership, mainly maintenance. So, that concept, as I mentioned, is something that my clients have done for quite some time now, and done very, very well. And one of the things that happened early on, that we experienced in some of the communities that were developed, is that we've been able to see that a lot of people who are interested in this type of living are from the same community where these projects are proposed. What we find is that people have spent 20, 25, 30, 40 years, in some cases, living in a community. They're familiar with the schools, the churches, the shopping, have made a lot of friends in the area, and don't necessarily want to pack up and move to Florida. They like the community. So, one of the things that has happened is that we see a large portion of the people who purchase in these communities coming from the same community or immediately surrounding communities. So, that's a tremendous benefit, because you're able to retain the resource of people who are not quite ready, you know, to pack it in and go someplace else and be cared for. Still independent, vibrant members of the community, with a lot of talent and abilities to offer, some still work, some work part-time, some volunteer, get involved in community organizations, get involved in local government. So, we retain the benefit of having that talent stay in the community. That's number one. Number two, the other thing that happens is that the people who are leaving, when I say leaving, selling their homes to move into these types of communities, are really opening up the opportunity for a young couple to move in and actually start the process all over again where they were years before, raising families in a single-family home. So, you know, we see the populations remaining and beginning to regenerate where these communities have developed. And the Flowers Mill Community, which I think was the first community that we did in Bucks County, that was a great example of it, where a lot of homes in the Levittown area were sold, people moved into the community, and younger people moved into those homes. So, the process enabled to keep the talents of the people who had been in the community, have them stay in the community, and at the same time, open up the community to younger people who wanted to raise a family in that community. No reason to believe that if this project moves forward, that this will be any different, because that has been the experience in every one of the communities that my clients have developed. What we're talking about and how this process started is that we signed an agreement of sale with the Arts Diocese of Philadelphia to purchase 12 acres, approximately 12 acres, of the St. Joseph's Worker property. And that area is defined by these hash lines right here. It did not include the church property, because the church was still being considered to remain open, and I understand it remains open currently for weddings and funerals. So, what we're talking about was a rezoning application that I submitted on behalf of my clients to the AQ district. The AQ district is abbreviation for age-qualified, basically means 55 or older, and it pretty much complies with what the Federal Fair Housing Act definition of an elderly person is. So, you can actually have 20% of the population living in these communities that do not meet that age threshold of 55. In addition to the 12 acres, which is, again, basically all this area here in the hash area, in order to make the layout work better, my clients were able to obtain an agreement of sale for an approximate one acre with a couple that own it by the name of Frank and Maureen Walsh. That property, I believe, was the subject of some prior application in the township for cell tower, which was not approved, and we believe that that has just simply gone off into the sunset. So, you can see what that does on this property. It squares it off. So, when looking at the ordinance, it made some sense to file, which is really what's pending in the township now, an application to rezone the St. Joseph's Worker property from the existing institutional district to AQ, and the Walsh property from the neighborhood, I think it's NCR district, also to AQ. So, at the end of the day, we'd have approximately 13 acres that would be considered for rezoning. We went to the Planning Commission on this a few months back, and I think there was a concern, a clear concern, that in rezoning the property to AQ, what's going to happen over here to the church, which is ultimately going to close? We couldn't speak to that at the time, because we didn't have the ability to say, "Well, we'd like to buy it, and if we can buy it, then we're going to do something pretty similar." And the reason I believe that was a concern is because that property would remain institutional while, if the AQ category was selected for rezoning, and this is all one parcel, you'd effectively have some split zoning. So, we looked at that, listened to that comment very carefully, and we were able to obtain the ability to purchase that property when the Arts Diocese is ready to sell it. However, right now, what remains pending is the request to rezone these two properties to the AQ district. It was recommended also during the course of the reviews, in the review period leading up to the Planning Commission meeting, that we consider leaving the St. Joe's piece that we had requested to be rezoned AQ, leaving it zoned institutional, because under the institutional zoning category, elderly housing is a permitted use, and it is a conditional use, which would require, obviously, a conditional use hearing. We're okay with that. If that is what the township thinks is a better fit, on the advice of your solicitor, we would be okay with that. The end of the day, what we're interested in doing is the 55 and older community, and we would be happy to work with the township to get there in the way that you deem is most proper. If, in fact, the township would agree to move forward with this application, what you're looking out here at is a community of townhouses. There are 76 units shown on this plan, obviously with stormwater retention facilities. There are two roads, actually, three roads, cul-de-sac at the rear, a primary entrance off the main road, pardon me. This looks like a secondary entrance, but it's really proposed, at this time anyway, for emergency vehicles only, so that there's really one primary access in and out, obviously with double stacking on each side of this road. But this would be, at least the initial thought was, keep it for emergency access only, and that's accomplished by having a stabilized base put in. It can be planted with grass and some type of a gate chain or what have you, if, in fact, that was the desire of the township. That's really an item for down the road with some, I guess, input from the traffic consultants and township fire marshal. But a lot of times, in order to minimize through traffic, we would go with the one primary access with the secondary access for emergency vehicles. But again, that's something that we could talk about later in the process, but I just wanted to give you our initial thoughts. There would be a clubhouse at this location. The clubhouse becomes sort of the center of the community for recreational activities, for meetings, and at the point in time when we're ready to move forward with development, which would be consistent, certainly in the type, it would be age-restricted, whether it be townhouses, age-restricted apartments, I can't tell you at this point in time until we get deeper into it, but it would be part of this community. It would be actually the second phase of this community. So, what you're looking at here is phase one. Over here, ultimately, we'd be phase two, and we would have to have that property either rezone to AQ or leave it remain as institutional and request conditional use on that property as well. The benefit, I think, to the township, one of the significant benefits to the township is that all of the amenities are owned by homeowners association. Everybody pays a monthly fee. It's usually collected on a monthly basis. That takes care of the maintenance of the roads, snow plowing, takes care of the stormwater basin maintenance, repairs that have to be done to the roadway or stormwater facilities. Very little demand for services and no economic drain on the township, because you don't have to plow the roads, and trash collection can be accommodated privately as well, if that would be the desire of the township. So, it's all part of a single, usually monthly association fee that's paid by all the homeowners. Typically, somebody would move into this community, they would pay an initial capital assessment that goes into an account to start building the funds for when repairs and maintenance are necessary, and then the 76 unit members and later, phase-two members would all contribute to that as well, so that there's always sufficient funds available. I tell this to people all the time, you know, yeah, I'm the attorney for the organization. I've been their attorney for quite some time. It's easy to believe in this organization. I live in a McGrath community. It's been a great experience for my wife and I. We love, it's a townhouse community. We love the house. It's a great product, and it's a wonderful community, and we've made a lot of great friends. So, I think it's something that, if this board agrees that it should move forward, that you'll be proud of it too, because at the end of the day, yep. Yeah, why don't you walk up?
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Actually, you can only see the entrance. What you have, folks, actually, you have a smaller version of this, so I'm going to leave this facing the audience.
Yeah, that's fine.
The first-picture board, thank you, I appreciate that, basically shows you the type of house, what the houses would look like. You can see there's a lot of attention to detail, an upscale appearance. It'll be very, very attractive. One of the other attractive features is a lot of emphasis and focus on the actual entrance, and you see here what is envisioned by my clients for the access road with brick walls identifying St. Joseph's Court, which is the name that's been picked for this community, as well as brick pillars and black, like wrought iron style type fencing, again, to give it an upscale appearance.
Can the audience see that? Do they have that?
Probably can't see that one.
Yeah.
Thank you. And the other added benefit of this, of course, is that this becomes a pretty good tax-ratable for the school district and the township and the county, of course, they'll get their share of it, without the need for a lot of services that would otherwise have to be provided in any type of residential community. So, we think it's a win-win. The experience has been that it is a win-win in the communities where my clients have developed. We hope you like the concept, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, give us some direction with regard to how you think we should proceed, what the next step might be in the process, from your perspective as well. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll turn to board comment and questions, and then we'll have some time for public comment questions. Mr. Galloway?
Yeah, can you return to me later?
Sure. Mr. Brassi?
Hello.
Mr. Dentz?
Like Mr. Harvey said earlier, this is simply a sketch plan. I mean, the sketch plan looks nice. There's nothing, I mean, one concern is stormwater management on this site. I know that every time it rains now, Falls-Tight Town Road is flooded out. We're evacuating the apartments across the street on New Falls Road from flooding, so that's a major concern. I see there is some stormwater management. The other concern that I have is what's going to happen to phase two. I mean, I'd be more comfortable if phase two, if we had an answer to that now, but the overall plan is nice. The houses look very nice.
And...
Opposed to the plan, I mean, it looks good.
Mm-hmm. And phase two, again, the type of housing, at the moment, we're not certain of, but you get...
It makes me nervous.
But you get a feel for what phase one will look like.
Right.
And since they now control phase two, they have more motivation than anybody else to make sure that phase two will look nice, and we can come back to you with that when we get, when that solidifies a little bit more. But there is, we believe, a need for this in the community. We can look at multifamily, you know, like age-restricted apartments, which is a good mix as well, but, you know, we can talk about that. But if we go in that direction, I guarantee you, it'll have the same aesthetic, upscale appearance that the townhouses have.
Yeah, overall, the plan looks nice. The layout looks nice. It's away from the creek back there in the wetlands.
Yeah, I, like Mr. Dentz, had some concerns about the stormwater, as well as traffic, obviously.
Sure.
You know, that'll all work itself out, I'm sure. Can you talk a little bit about the price and the size of these homes?
Yeah, I can give you...
I know it's early, but...
It is early, and as long as everybody understands that.
Yeah.
The price point is probably somewhere in the high twos to low threes. What happens generally is that you pick a basic price, and you offer a lot of things, and my clients have a reputation for offering a lot of nice amenities as part of that base price. But some people want to add more to it, and there will be many options. And if they have many customers, customers like my wife, the prices will go, they'll go even higher, so.
I bought a new home, so I know what you're saying, yeah.
But that's where we see the base price...
And how big are they?
Probably between 1,700 and 2,000 square feet.
Okay. Like, three bedrooms?
Two or three? Two.
Two bedroom.
With an optional third.
All right, yeah, I mean, the rendering of the plans look, you know, that looks nice, but, so, ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. And we recognize, obviously, we have to deal with traffic.
Yeah.
We won't get into that really tonight, but we'll be supplying the township with a full traffic study. All of the publications and all the traffic experts will tell you... All of the publications and all the traffic experts will tell you that age-qualified community adds the least amount to the roadway of any other type of residential development.
Yeah, like Mr. Rocco, Mr. Dentz, the concerns about stormwater, I like the attention you've already paid to it with the two detention basins, and traffic as well, obviously, is an issue. Trying to think if there's anything, yeah, and in terms of moving forward, I guess you've already, I think, thinking back over, because it's been a couple of years now since this has been in the works, you've had conversations with DEP already to talk about maybe what's back there, wetlands, et cetera, and...
Yeah. We've got a good handle on this.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I had one more. How close are you to Phase Two, to acquiring that property?
Well, we have, we have a commitment to be able to purchase it, but that will not happen as long as the church remains open. So realistically, the schedule, as I understand it, Monsignor, is June 30th, so probably sometime after June 30th, we can move forward on Phase Two.
So you don't want to look at it as, you don't want to make it one phase?
Um...
I think that's what Mr. Dentz was trying to say, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you want to see the whole, the whole development of it.
Well, you'd like to see the whole development, not necessarily have to build it all at once, though, right? I mean, that's your concern.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
You want to see it. You want to see what you're getting.
Yeah, we've approved projects in the past, especially industrial ones.
I like to know that you own everything.
Mm-hmm.
This is your plan.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't mean you have to do the whole thing at once.
Understood.
Wouldn't like to see you do Phase One and then find out that they've built a seven-story assisted living building next door or something like that.
Understood.
I'm not opposed to that either. You know what I'm saying?
I do. I appreciate that.
Didn't say I'm not opposed. You know what I meant, Tom.
I know what you meant, Jeff. Thank you.
Yeah, the one reference, I mean, I think, one of the things we have to, we keep in mind as we start looking at a new building here, people are often asking us about stormwater and what's going to happen to stormwater. The older the building is, the less likely there was ever any plan for stormwater. And so everything that's built now has to be built to a much higher level of stormwater management than was built before. You know, obviously adding some impervious here with the streets, somewhat used to, was all soccer fields and softball fields, but you did have buildings there, currently buildings there right now, in some roadway, obviously nothing, not as much as you're putting in here, but, so that's a concern. The apartments across the street, you know, just because of the way they were built, when they were built, obviously way before any of us were here, was just bad to begin with. I don't think, I don't think there's anything that can be done to keep those from flooding, and our fire marshal just knows that automatically, you know, and all the fire companies in the area know. Okay, well, after that floods and we get people out, where else are we going to go? They just plan for it. It's just a regular thing. So I think that's an issue that's beyond help, quite frankly, which is something we have to deal with because it's built in a lower area. But I think overall, you know, comment you made, which I think was a good one, you know, about, you know, the McGrath reputation and the projects they do, and it's pretty easy to see the level of quality, you know, I'm not surprised to hear that you chose a McGrath home. I'm surprised that you actually, I didn't realize you're 55, so it's, you know...
I must confess, I must confess, I'm not 55.
Did you just buy it yesterday? Is that what... But, you know, I think, you know, some of the questions and concerns I have, you know, have already been raised.
Understood.
I mean, there's not a lot of concerns, but certainly, understanding too, that the property as it is right now, even though you have the, essentially, you own the property that we're looking at here, that the people are looking at, we're seeing the same one you are. Right now, all the maintenance on that is being done by Cabrini, is that correct? You know, and so in terms of cutting grass and plowing and everything else, all of that's done by Cabrini.
Right.
And so that obviously would change if, once this is, if this goes through and the property changes hands, and then the second phase, if the second phase goes through. Mr. Galloway, comments or questions from you?
No, just, it was a nice presentation, and some of the issues raised, I was thinking about the Phase Two, and, well, thank you for coming and doing it.
Thank you. Appreciate the input.
Okay. All right. We can open up to public comment. We can take people, all right? Mr. Benny, your hand was up first.
How you doing, Brian, Benny Falls Township? Phase Two is really important here because they don't have it, as they said, they have an option for it. If they can go through with Phase One, that means they're going to have to subdivide the property, so Phase Two will be a separate parcel for a short period of time anyway, and they're going to create a lot that doesn't conform to the existing zoning. It's way over the impervious surface. If they don't ever build Phase Two, then we have a building there that doesn't meet the zoning requirements. We don't know what's going to be put in there, something, anything could be put in there with, on the institutional permitted uses. So it's real important, I think, that they address the Phase Two along with the Phase One, and we have some commitment that they're actually going to purchase it and not that they have an option to purchase it. Something that Mr. Hecker didn't touch on is that this type of townhouse, as identified in our zoning district, in our zoning book, by definition is a single-family house. It's not a multifamily house, which is permitted under conditional use, but single-family houses are not permitted under conditional uses under this zoning district. So they'd have to change the zoning, or they have to get some use exceptions or some variances. So, and the, what they're showing on their sketch plan here with the setbacks, if they had to subdivide it and Phase Two wasn't built, that require numerous variances. Their stormwater management in the bottom part near the creek impacts the 100-foot wetlands margin significantly. So there's other issues with the plan, but I think you're on, right on track with, Phase Two has to get resolved before they can proceed with Phase One. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes?
Mary Beth Haberstik in Falls Township. As a matter of fact, my house is right behind St. Joe's. Sacristy is almost directly pointing to my house. I have a couple of concerns. My main one is, as you have talked about, the water basin. When I moved into that house 13 years ago, or 30, excuse me, 38 years ago, we were not a flood zone in my house. About 20 years ago, we became a flood zone. If they're building this, my concern is major development, changing it drastically. Right now, on a bad storm, the water comes up to the fence of my property, because there is a piece of property between my fence and the creek. On the other side of the creek is St. Joe's. Right now, and it's a hill, it comes up just about to the fence. I'm afraid that this is going to put us over into a major flood area. The other things I did want to ask from McGrath, since I don't know your reputation other than that I have heard your name for many years, I'm wondering, as a resident right there behind the property, how much impact, as far as noise, are we going to be concerned with? Is this Phase One and Phase Two going to be years in the making? Will be, we be dealing with construction vehicles for that long? Is it, you know, something you have plans to be in and out really quickly? And is there going to be consideration for the residents?
Just, I'm sorry, just before you answer, Mr. McGrath, could you do the microphone so it can be picked up by audio, please?
We always like to interact with the neighbors before we start a project and address their concerns and work to the hours that the township and the ordinance allows us to. Give you an example, in good times, we built 300 homes over in Langhorne, over in Yardley. Took us approximately two and a half years. This is 76 units. We hopefully, and we feel very strongly about the market here, we always wanted to land here in Falls. We think we can, hopefully, a year and a half, two years, you know, we can get everything done, so. But we'll make sure. And one thing I like to say about stormwater management, because I know builders always get that bad name for taking a piece of property, I think it's important to look at the whole St. Joe piece, even the church piece, there's a lot of blacktop there, but we've already identified the 100-year floodplain, and we did the delineation of the wetlands there, and we'll, we'll make stormwater management better here because of the basins. It won't be uncontrolled runoff, and I feel really comfortable about that, so, all right?
Thank you.
My only other concern and question, and I don't know whether this is something for McGrath or the board, it might strictly be a St. Joseph and then St. Francis thing, is that piece of property that I do not own between my gate, my fence, and the creek. I don't know whether that's been any consideration in the sale of the property. And my only, my concern about it is if that's a little piece left, there's only five houses that own any property. My house down, or the, after my house down to Fallsington-Tolley Town Road, they own that piece of property all the way down to the creek. I do not. So there's a piece of property approximately from the front of your desk to the middle of this room. That is, is not my property. There are a lot of trees. This one is dry. Over the creek. This is the creek. Okay, so my property is back here. There's a piece of property from my fence down to the creek that is not my property. It has been at St. Joe's, the worker property. There are, if my property's here, which I'm not sure what are your house numbers. Okay, that's my property. We do not own between our fences and creek. I'm just concerned with it staying there, primarily because there's old growth trees. There is also power lines that go along the fence line, and if that's left without any work, those trees are going to start damaging everything. So thank you.
You're welcome, and it's certainly something that we will look at as we move forward in the process, as to whether that property requires some maintenance to be taken care of.
Yeah, it's a good quote. We're looking at it, and the plans you gave us don't have any ownership of that particular property Mrs. Haberstik's talking about, so I'm not sure, you know, it, maybe an easement of some kind, somebody has to own it somehow, somewhere.
Yep, yep.
So...
We appreciate that issue being raised, and we'll address it.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Harvey, you think that St. Joe's would own it because they own the bridge?
It's true.
And so they own both sides.
Right.
So it goes down about a third of the way on the property, right, on both sides of the creek?
Yeah, most likely. You'd assume that. Okay. Other, Mr. Kenny, yes?
Just like to say about McGrath, he's probably the best builder in Bucks County. I've seen a lot of his properties, and not one of them is failing. And there's something wrong, they get on it, and they get on it fast. I don't think we'll have any problem with them over there. You see a problem like that lady has, they'll fix it. I feel no problem with them being here. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Monsignor?
Good evening, thank you. With regard to Phase Two, as pastor of St. Francis, it has been my intention, with the support of our parish leadership, to sell the last piece of this property once we get permission from the Archdiocese to do that. And my understanding is that we will be getting that permission to do so. I had hoped to do that so that when they came here tonight, they would be able to say that they have that under agreement of sale. But the Archdiocese will not move in that direction until June 30th. So we fully intend to do it, will do it, and the Diocese will give us that permission, I believe.
Okay.
And they will be the buyers, so.
Okay.
Is that, do you know if there's a timeline after June 30th? I mean, July 1st, here's your bill of sale?
The Diocese, the group that advises the Archbishop, they meet every other month, probably not so much during the summer, but I hope to put it on the fast track. They know we want to do this, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Monsignor. Any other comments or questions, concerns? Okay? All right. Any other board comment or question?
None. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Okay. All right, professionals, any questions from the professionals I didn't think they asked, sorry?
Not this time.
All right. I guess one of the questions I had, in terms of, this is a single parcel, right? Now, we're calling it Phase One, Phase Two, but it is one single parcel?
All the St. Joe's parcel is one single parcel, the Walsh piece makes up, it's another acre.
Right, right, I'm sorry.
It's a second parcel.
Correct, okay. So in terms of, if we were going to, and the board isn't sure, again, we're seeing this, you know, a couple of us have seen different variations of this plan over the last year and a half, maybe something like that, or a year, and we've talked about whether or not, you mentioned it earlier, going to, you know, zoning change or conditional use, would there have to be a subdivision, Mr. Clark, first of those two pieces?
There would. My understanding from what the Monsignor just said, that if the sale went through, it would not include the church parcel. The sale going through to McGrath would only include the parcel that we see here in green, so they would need to subdivide it, and the Walsh parcel would be part of it also.
All right, the parcel in green has been sold, essentially. Okay, so the secondary parcel, which has the church itself, some of the parking lot on the one side, the parking lot behind and in front, and drive areas of the school, as well as the gym behind it, that would be Phase Two, which would be available for sale, I guess, July 1st?
That's my understanding, but it would need to be subdivided. I'm not certain if the parcel has been sold as of yet or...
No, it's under agreement.
Under agreement, sorry, under agreement.
And Mr. Clark is correct, in order for the sale to be completed, it would have to be subdivided if the Phase Two was never included.
Right.
It wouldn't necessarily have to be subdivided or rezoning, because you can create a split zoning if that was your desire.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Hecker and as well as Mr. McGrath for coming in, Mr. Flanagan as well, and for the residents that are here tonight that had their questions or concerns. And again, if the program, if the project moves forward, there will be, you know, other meetings in the future regarding, whatever direction the township goes in, in conjunction with Mr. McGrath, whether it's changing the zoning or moving forward with conditional use, so there will be more time for people to ask questions and address concerns if there's something you think of, you know, later on that you haven't thought of yet. So again, thank you, everybody, for coming out to this. Hopefully, it was informative. I know there's been a lot of questions about it. I see a lot of, a lot of faces from St. Joe's that I recognize, and I know, and I'm very conscious of the fact that it's a sensitive issue for a lot of people who put a lot of their time and have a lot of, a lot of memories with that, with that parish and that property, whether it was having your children baptized, or getting married, or funerals for loved ones, or playing soccer, or softball, or football, or cheerleading, or doing something, or sending your kids to that school. It's, it's a very difficult thing to close a church, and it's obviously a shame it has to happen, a shame it has to happen to any parish, but let alone this one, which was my parish too, Mr. Rocco's as well. And so we are sensitive to the nature of people's feelings. Unfortunately, there's certain things we can control, and there's things that we can't control, and so we're dealing with the things we can control right now. And, but I just want to make sure, I hope that people understand that and know that, and I know that in talking to Mr. McGrath, Mr. Hecker, I know they're conscious of that as well. So hopefully, whatever happens, it'll be something that'll be to the benefit of the township and to, and to the benefit of the people that live in the area especially. Okay, so, thank you again, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Let's move on to agenda number three, which is Sylvie Concrete's... Okay, quite a crowd here for the Saint Joe's projects. We're allowing people to sort of gather their things and move out before we move on to agenda item number three?
Maybe you should say "go in peace." Maybe you should say "go in peace" if they're all walking up.
Okay, let's move on to agenda number three, which is Sylvie Concrete, Sylvie Concrete Products CNG Facility Preliminary Land Development for 355 Newbold Road. Mr. Gray?
Yes, as mentioned, this is for Sylvie Concrete. The applicant is proposing to construct a 2,400 square foot compressed natural gas or CNG fueling station at the site of an existing concrete pad on a 7.48 acre parcel. Tonight representing the applicant is Mr. Stephen Harris.
Thank you. I know you've got a busy agenda tonight, and I'll try to be brief for the Mr. Hecker. This is the, this is Newbold Road, and this area down here is where the Sylvie facility is now, in this area here. This area, which I'm showing you on the right side of this plan, is the current Sylvie fueling station. Up till they switched to CNG, this was a diesel fueling station. And each one of these dots, they would pull one of their concrete trucks up to, and there was a fellow that spent his evening filling up all the concrete trucks with diesel. I represented Sylvie about a year ago, and because, and we went to the zoning hearing board, and the zoning hearing board granted a variance to allow the Sylvie's fueling station to be switched from diesel to compressed natural gas. And because it was already there, we didn't need to come before this board for land development plan approval. After that approval was received, and I will tell you that the switchover has been made, and about 30 of the Sylvie's ready mixed concrete trucks are currently running on compressed natural gas. And the compressed, the gas line runs down Newbold Road. After that was approved, US Venture, that develops CNG fueling facilities all over the country, approached the Sylvies about renting a piece of ground and putting up a private, I'm sorry, a public facility in conjunction with the private facility. Now, I'm here tonight with Zach Fresschner and Pat Van Dehe of Cessau out of Columbus, Ohio, who are the engineers for this project. And this little square here is the canopy under which the public fueling facility will be located. This square here is what they call the compressor station. What happens is the compressed natural gas comes into this facility, is compressed, comes out into this rack, and at the pressure that it comes out of the pipe, if you hook up your truck and let it sit overnight, it'll fill up, basically. But if you need, if your truck, you come in, as it were, on empty, there are two high-pressure fueling stations at the end here where you can get fueled up quickly. That's exactly what this facility is over here. So it's, and it's like the facility that's in, somewhat like the facility that's already in town. There'll be four, four fueling stations. Traffic will come in, go through, go back out. The Sylvie trucks will go back out this way. This used to be where the Sylvie employee parking lot was. That has now been relocated, or will be relocated, behind the facility. I can explain in gruesome detail, if anybody wants to hear it, about how the property, who owns which side, you know, how this is laid out in squares on the subdivision plan. But this layout received a recommendation of preliminary as final approval, subject to compliance with the Township Engineers' letter. We've, and in addition, with a recommendation that the variances that we have requested be granted. And the, I can tell you, the first comment on the resolution that I've seen requires that we comply with all of the Department of Environmental Protections regulations, the, a application. What DEP requires you to do is to file a, an application for the intent to install a CNG facility. That's been done. All of the permitting in that regard has taken place. We believe that we are in compliance with all of the Falls Township requirements with regard to the traffic flow. Pendot permits have been obtained for the entrance and have been delivered to the engineer. I can, and this is really at the words discretion, if you would like me to go through the variances that are being requested, I'll be happy to go through them item by item. I can tell you in a general way, we've asked for a variance not to expand Newbold Road.
Mr. Harris, I'm sorry, can you take the microphone with you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, the variances are, for example, we've asked not to expand Newbold Road, not to put sidewalks down the road, you know. They are those types of variances. The old traditional will give you an aerial photograph rather than describing everything on the plan within 400 feet. I don't think that there's anything in the waiver requests that are particularly unique and/or troublesome. The Planning Commission, as I say, we were before the Planning Commission twice, and at the second visit, they recommended preliminary as final plan approval. Now, that's my executive summary. As I say, I know you've got a busy night tonight. I can go, I can, I can talk about this all night long if you'd like me. So if you want more detail, if you want me to go through the variances item by item, I will do so. I know that the, the application, the resolution that was drafted was for preliminary plan approval. I've submitted to the Township an application for preliminary as final, because frankly, there's nothing to come back on, on a second trip. I mean, we've, we've addressed all, that's why we came back to the Planning Commission a second time to address all the engineering issues. And not that, we don't like to come here, but there really isn't anything to be gained by coming back a second time. So I brought with me 10 copies of the resolution. The only thing it really does is the applicant is technically US Venture, not Sylvie. It's on Sylvie's property. And it says preliminary as final, where the one that was drafted says preliminary. And as I say, I sent that to Lauren and to Joe late last week, early this week. So my request is that we receive preliminary as final plan approval for the public CNG facility, and I'm prepared to answer any other questions the board has, and I'm prepared to, if you wish, discuss this in much more detail. But that's the outline.
Okay. A couple, I'll agree that quite a lot of the waivers you're looking for are, you know, regarding curbing, sidewalks, things of that nature. There are three, though, that I just, I'm going to ask you to sort of go into some detail on. I'm looking at page six of the proposed resolution that lists.
I'm there.
A through I.
Yes.
Okay. Can you address B, please?
Yes. The, what we're, what we're saying there is that the, we're meeting the Falls Township site distance requirements. The pendot requirements are a little more stringent. However, we were granted highway occupancy permits for those driveway entrances. So they were satisfied that by meeting the Falls requirements, these driveway entrances were safe, and they granted us permits for those driveways.
And it does say that specifically in the permit, the highway occupancy permit you have?
Yeah.
Okay. Have you seen that, Mr. Sullivan?
I have not. I just want to correct one thing. The Falls Township ordinance is much more strict for site distance, but their waiver request is to use.
Oh, pendot, okay, I got it backwards.
And if he has the HOP, then it, and I would obviously have approved that site distance.
So what's ours? Ours is 700 feet?
Ours is 700 feet.
What's pendots?
It's based on speed limit.
Space on speed.
Forty-five miles an hour?
Yeah, forty-five miles an hour.
About 350 feet in one direction, maybe 500 and some other.
But we have provided the highway occupancy permit to you guys. And the problem is that, you know, as you know, there's a very good screen here of trees, and this is a raised berm about six to eight feet high with very mature trees on it. We can meet, ultimately meet that requirement, which is coming this way, but it means taking down all of these trees and taking down the berm, which effectively shields this whole thing from view. And as I say, we've got a pendot HOP.
Yeah, because it's not, I mean, it's not, it's an industrial area, so I mean, it'd be different if it was sort of across the street from houses where people wouldn't want to necessarily look out and see a concrete facility or a fueling station, but there isn't any such thing across the street, but.
The gun range, I think, is across the street.
Yeah, somewhere.
Falls gun, right?
If it's on that side or more on the, on the more eastern side of it. Yeah, I mean, it was a concern of mine, I mean, I, you know, I live not too far from that area. Actually, you know, three of us up here live not too far from that area. So we know the road, we know people travel a pretty good distance, especially around that corner. And so that was one of the concerns I had. I, and I'll let other board members, if they want to raise other issues with the waivers, but I was concerned too about waiver E, which was allowing a proposed driveway, entrance of a driveway to be constructed within an easement. What easement exactly, where, and which driveway we're looking at?
Well, we had to, we created, and I'm not 100% sure that I understand that either, because we were asked by the township as a condition of the zoning hearing board approval to create an easement, a cross easement between these.
Oh, because they're two different properties.
This is owned by Larry and John Sylvie. This is owned by Riverside Complex. We couldn't merge them because this parcel had been acquired by.
She has to use the microphone, sorry. Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't paying attention either, so thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll wait for her to pick that up.
We were asked to provide a cross easement agreement between these two parcels, which we've done, and it's been approved by the township, and it will be recorded together with the final plan. So, yes, we're within an easement, but it's an easement that the township requested.
Okay. All right, I was looking specifically, just, I thought it was an easement somewhere just specifically where the driveways are, but you're, okay. Yeah, I'm looking at the entrances, all right, okay. And section F, the loud disturbance of the 100-year floodplain, in one of your documents you do mention, and I forget which one it is now, about wanting to, not wanting to comply with one of the requirements because of the high water table. And yet you're disturbing the 100-year floodplain area, which.
Well, we're within, that's because of this lake.
Okay.
And frankly, when we came in initially, we had proposed a detention basin in this area, and the engineering staff said, no, that doesn't make any sense. You should grade this so everything flows into the lake. So that's why there's a disturbance, because it's being graded to go into the lake.
So where, but the 100-year floodplain, where is it, where are the, where's the line for that, in terms of what you're doing?
Is it on this?
It's on the most current, that would be split.
Okay. Can you show us?
Make sure, if the gentleman's going to speak, he has to use the microphone.
Yes. It's apparently, this is an older plan. This is Zach Fresschner of Cessau, and this is the plan that we actually presented to the zoning hearing board, so it doesn't have the floodplain. The latest plan that was submitted does.
Can you put it down on the other one for us, because it's easier to see us, for us on the other one?
Sure. It doesn't show the contours, because it's kind of hard to delineate, but really what it does is it basically runs a kind of a line through here, you know, around the property. It's at the contour, the base flood elevation, which is, I think, 42, and it just runs on that contour through the property. Part of the issues they have there is that they have no flow. So we're trying to, by disturbing some area within the floodplain, get positive drainage back into their stormwater facility. Right now, they kind of have interrupted flow because of the misgrade that's out there. It's kind of trapping water and creating kind of a flooding issue in their drivelanes as their trucks are entering and exiting the site.
Is this going to be, I'm sorry, I was going to say, is this going to be, is it paved? Is it crushstone?
Currently, this area right here is crushstone. This employee parking area will all be concrete. This is all concrete that we're basically going to replace and then create a larger green space area in here, as well as in between the two drives. It's all paved, it's crushstone, that we're going to replace with a stormwater quality swale, if you will, to try to treat the water. We're going to receive flow from either direction, treat the water before it's discharged into the pond area.
Okay.
And one of the other things I want to point out with regards to the traffic, we did have the same concerns about traffic. We're restricting access on this. This entrance that we're creating that's new will be an entrance only to prohibit any issues with site distance from exiting the property. We were concerned about meeting the site distance requirements for any truck that would be exiting this facility with the corner, with the curve.
Right.
So what we've done is made this the entrance only to the facility. This will be solely the exit right here. So in order to help improve that, that site distance issue.
All right. Okay, I'll shut up for a little while, let other board members ask questions or raise comments. I just wanted to kind of go through those couple waivers that I had issues with. I don't know if there are other ones on there that other board members have an issue with. But Mr. Galloway?
Not, not right now, thank you.
Mr. Boraski?
Along with the Planning Commission's approval, they also, they recommend that the record plan show a lease parcel rather than a subdivision. Can you comment on that?
That's been taken care of, yes. That, sorry for being a lawyer, but when, the MPC says that if you want to lease land, a portion of land, that's a subdivision. So I said, hey, we've got to get a subdivision. When we came to the Planning Commission the first time, the Planning Commission said, we don't do that here in Falls Township. What we do is show a lease line. And so in the plan that's pending before you, it shows a lease line, not a subdivision. The other thing that you should understand is that after the 10-year lease is up with US Venture, Sylvie will be acquiring this property, and then, or the lease will be over, they'll buy out the facility, and then they'll be operating it themselves. So the plan, as you currently see it, is simply a lease line. And that's how we dealt with that issue. And I guess I got a little overzealous.
Mr. Dent?
I didn't realize how much of this was actually in the floodplain. That's a concern.
Well, it's a floodplain in the sense that it's a lake. This isn't like the floodplain of the Delaware River where there's a flowing stream. I happen to represent Tencum Township, so I know something a little about floodplains. And of course, you've got the river down here. So this isn't a flowing body of water. This isn't something where something's going to get trapped behind a damming effect. If there was a 100-year flood and this lake came up, you'd have some flooding of this area. But you're not creating a danger to a third party by creating an obstruction within a flowing body of water.
You're installing another gas filling facility inside a floodplain now. The gas facility is?
No, all the equipment will be out of the floodplain. We designed such that we're not impacting.
No, what you're trying to tell him is that you're, you're trying to put your tanks above the base flood elevation. They're still in the floodplain.
Uh, that, I'd have to see the, I mean, I'd have to read the plan.
That's kind of what your waiver letter says.
Okay, well, I will tell you that there is 30-plus acres of land that's in a floodplain area on the site. We're impacting 1.84 of that 30-plus acre, so just a little over 5%.
How much is the acre, how many acres is your whole project?
The whole facility combined?
Project.
The whole, the whole project, just the project is, I think it's about five acres. I think it's about five acres.
I think it's 4.48, but it's less than five acres.
The lake is a mapped FEMA structure. It has a floodway and it has a floodplain, so.
Explain the floodway.
Floodway is the area where the flood would occur. Floodway is the area where the flood would occur, where the water would flow, basically, in a 100-year storm.
So, it's in the flood plain?
And the flood plain.
It's flood plain.
Flood plain is the area outside the floodway.
A good portion of this project.
Almost all of the project is within the flood plain.
All of, yeah, the.
All the area, all the area they're proposing this facility for.
Like the driveways they're putting in or.
Is in flood plain.
Yeah.
I'm done for now. Go ahead.
Yeah, I had the same concerns as Mr. Harvey. And of course, the flood plain, which, I'm not really following the logic, your guys' logic on that, so.
Well, the, what the regulations say is that you've got to be one foot above, I think it's one foot, isn't it, one foot above the flood elevation.
All structures should be a foot and a half above.
Okay.
Flood plane elevation if you're allowed to build in the flood plain.
And, and we intend to meet that requirement so that there would not be any flooding of the facility. And by the way, we've never had, there's never, we've had 100-year plus storms. There's never, I understand it's on a map, but there's never been flooding from that lake on this facility. We just haven't had that.
But what they're going to do is put their structures and things a foot and a half above the base flood elevation, but it still has during a 100-year storm, the ability to flood.
Yeah.
The items will be outside the flood area.
What you have now is nothing but sand and, I don't know what that is. I mean, I'm just looking at.
Well, it's, it's basically crushed concrete, which you define.
Wouldn't be affected by a flood anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. I mean, it just gets flooded. I mean, it hasn't, but it would. That's, you're absolutely correct.
Personally, I think there's a lot, you guys have a lot of options, and not to build in the flood plain would be one of them. You've got plenty of property. You didn't need to build it in the flood plain.
Well, that's not exactly true because of the location of the current, this is already the private fueling area.
Yep.
This is rider truck. This is the Silvy facility. I mean, the, the only place to put it where you can serve both a, the Silvy's facility and have a public facility is by having this compressor compound located here so that it can serve in both directions. We can't, you know, have it way down here somewhere. That is the only location in which it can be located.
And this site is two separate parcels, is that correct?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. It's, this parcel is owned by John and Larry Silvy. This parcel is owned by Riverside, which is one of their corporations. And we looked at.
One of whose corporations?
Silvy's.
Silvy's.
Yeah.
We looked at trying to merge these two, but because this parcel was acquired by a 1031 tax-deferred exchange, it would, there would have been, it would have been a tax disaster to merge these into a single lot. We just couldn't do it. And it's a practical matter.
Would be a tax disaster, that's why you wouldn't do it?
Yeah. And number two, even if we did it.
It would be one parcel.
It doesn't, but it doesn't change, I mean, it's one parcel, but it doesn't change what the facility is.
It does if you try and sell one parcel, because now you have something that's in the middle of two.
Oh, we do, yeah. We, we could not sell this parcel separately.
Why?
For the reason, if we, if it were sold separately, it would be subject to the lease and the cross easement agreement, which is the reason that the township solicitors made us agree to a cross easement agreement, so that even if you did sell this off separately, A, it's subject to the lease, and B, it's subject to the cross easement agreement, which would allow, continue to allow for the flow between these two facilities. So, you're right, it's owned by two separate parcels, but it can, it would continue to operate just the way it's operating now.
Anything else for you?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Dent, any other issues or?
No, the flood plain's a major issue for me.
Mr. Sullivan, could you explain for me again floodway and flood plain?
And what part of this is in either or both?
Nothing they're proposing is in the floodway. You're really not allowed to build in the floodway under any circumstances. Floodway is something FEMA does to determine where the main channel would be in a flood. Flood plain extends beyond that, in areas that are inundated up to, including a 100-year storm.
And everything they're doing is within the flood plain. However, they're going to raise it above.
They'll make sure that all their equipment is flood, either above their flood elevation or flood-proofed, but they still need a waiver to allow any kind of development within the flood plain area.
Thank you.
No, thanks. Mr. Galloway, you're right?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Mr. Either Mr. Clark or Ms. Gallagher or Mr. Sullivan, comments or questions from you, based on what you've heard?
No. Not at this time.
Okay. Any public comment? I see no hands.
Go ahead.
No. All right, so what we have in front of us, in front of us, is an application for preliminary land development. Mr. Harris is indicating he would be asking for preliminary and final of this. Resolution, if it were approved, well, first off, we'd have to decide if we're going to look at preliminary or both preliminary and final. If, no matter what, it would, it would be 15 dash. Four. Four. And so, we can have some discussion based on whether or not, you know, what the pleasure of the board is moving forward with this application.
I'm opposed personally. I don't like it at all in the flood plain and the two parcels. The whole thing makes no sense.
Okay.
I'm going to agree with Mr. Dent.
Okay. Comments or questions or thoughts or emotions?
I'll make a motion to deny.
I'll second.
Okay.
Is your motion to deny the application from U.S. Venture, Inc., or to deny the granting of the waiver listed as F from Section 191-52.1 to allow disturbance to the 100-year flood plain? And I would suggest that if the board is inclined to deny this application, that they deny the waiver and then deny the application in its entirety.
The two separate motions?
I would.
Okay.
So.
Do I make them both at once?
No, I would make them separately.
Then I'll make a motion to deny the waiver.
From Section.
191.
191-52.1, allowing a disturbance of the 100-year flood plain area.
Yes.
Amending your original motion.
This is my motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, so a motion made to deny the waiver for disturbing the 100-year flood plain and seconded. Mrs. Pullen, pull the board, please.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rockham?
Yes.
And now, board members, with that, with that waiver being denied, unlike the other waivers where the applicant could move forward with the project as presented, with the application as presented, if you had denied any of the other eight waivers, the applicant, the, I would make the recommendation that you now deny the application in its entirety.
I'll make the motion to deny the application in its entirety.
I'll second.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rockham?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Sorry. Hopefully, we can get together with a better plan and work out something in the future. Okay, next item on our agenda, Fairliss Credit Union Preliminary and Final Land Development for 8525 New Falls Road. See Mr. Profi coming forward. While he's getting his thing set up, I'll allow Mr. Gray to introduce.
Yes, as mentioned, for Fairliss Credit Union, the applicant is proposing to construct a 5,600-square-foot credit union building with drive-through window on a 32,866-square-foot site. As mentioned, tonight, representing the applicant is Mr. Tom Profi.
Thank you very much on behalf of the credit union. I want to thank the board's supervisors for letting us appear on the agenda tonight. I have with me Mr. Vince Fiorvani, and an issue came up after we had the board supervisors grant us to change the zoning. And I think Mr. Fiorvani can explain that to the board, because it does have to do with the layout of the building. It was, it's different than you saw, not the layout of the building, the location of the building is a little different than you saw at the time that the change of zoning was granted. So, Vince, if you could explain what happened.
Evening.
Evening.
I'll be referring to the rendered exhibit that you see before you, which is a copy, a blown-up copy of the landscape plan, and also Sheet 5 of the set is the utility plan as a wider scale, and it shows some of the surrounding properties. Basically, what, the way that this evolved is when we were first brought in to the project team, there was a survey that was already recently done by a licensed surveyor that was provided to us, and some conceptual planning had already started with the architect and layout of the building. And it was obvious that we needed some rezoning. So, as the rezoning was being prepared, we were out getting additional survey work and finding controls for our own reasons, where we would survey the surrounding areas and start to put together plans. So, these things were moving simultaneously. As we got further and further into it, we started to find evidence that contradicted the recorded information that was used by the previous surveyor. And, right, and there's a couple of unique circumstances with the property, the first being the township border between the site. The recorded information for the church property, and I'll flip to Sheet 5 for a second. Now, this one's not rendered, except for the utilities, but the recorded information that the previous surveyors had used had the long rectangular piece for the church and the new parcel that we're using for the, for the credit union, and it spanned across the township border. Now, this recorded information had errors in it, but it was recorded and it was used to put together the previous plan. You can see corners that were found in this area that, you know, would suffice to hold the property boundaries to the planet. And they were very accurate. They worked, and they used that as a basis for the survey that was provided to us. However, as we started to move forward and survey the subdivisions in this side and the subdivision on that side, we started to see that there was an error made in this recorded document and other errors that were made in the conveyances when you go back through history. The Dan Hurst Corporation was a major landowner at the time, and they had sold off to the church the areas east of the lot where the pharmacy is. And, and the recorded information for the church, when they recorded new deeds to consolidate their holdings, they, there was a segment here, this was considered as one long line, when actuality, this subdivision had an angle point and a nine-foot piece was missed. So, when their recorded information was recorded with an error, that was propagated. So, then it was recorded again, and everyone kept missing that segment right there. And this is the township line between the two municipalities. It's one straight line in this area. So, you have a subdivision on this side that establishes that line, subdivision on the left also establishes a line, and this parcel recorded had the line in a different location. So, you do see that once in a while when you're doing survey work, but in this situation, it just was an error that was made in the original conveyance from the Dan Hurst Corporation that we found more and more evidence, and it was apparently clear to us what had happened when we went back. So, we found that midway through, I was assembling more detail, and decided to pull the job, fix it, and put it back in. Now, what that actually changed, about an eight-foot, maybe 8.5 feet here, additional land that brought us into this location, which all the features then started to add up, and the old pen dot plans had it in this location. Originally, when we were given the survey, this driveway and this easement, it was concluded by the previous survey that our site was in the middle of that driveway. But when we fixed everything, all the features line up and everything now we're happy with. So, we wanted to pull it, fix it, and put it back. Essentially, the layout's the same. The building's exactly the same, just slid over eight feet, so that the conveyance from this side of the pharmacy and the conveyance that was taken by the church are now in agreement with all the subdivisions that surround it. So, you do see that once in a while, and when you have a big municipal border, sometimes things are missed. And once they're missed, if they, they can propagate, if no one picks them up. So, that was the situation with the survey.
Okay.
Wow.
So, as it stands.
That was a lot to say we moved eight feet.
There's a lot more to it, but.
We're good.
And it happened while he was preparing the plans, and Vince called me and said, Tom, we have a problem. And I said, what do you, what do you think, Vince? He said, well, my guys are telling me things are wrong in the field. I said, well, if you're, if you're not certain and you don't feel comfortable, then we'll just stop the process. And he did. And then we submitted, we sent a letter, because it just didn't, he just didn't think it, it didn't feel right to him at the time.
Sure.
So, but we have the resolution, and we have the engineer's review letter, and Mr. Fiorvani's going to walk through it to address it. I believe the resolution seeking preliminary and final approval mirrors the engineer review lesson, so, excuse me, letter. So, Vince?
Okay, I'm looking at the engineer's review dated January 23rd. First page is the variances that were granted. I don't know if we want to go through each one or just the waivers would be more appropriate.
I'm just looking at the waivers. See, I was looking at the waivers requested, looking at Page 6.
Okay.
On the, of the resolution, which, as you said, as Mr. Profi said, should match the, should match the engineer's letter.
Okay, I'm looking at Section F of the resolution, number 1A, Section 191-36D, curb radius of 25 feet at proposed driveways. The radius of the curvature of the, of the curbing in the proposed driveways varies from, say, 12 to 14 feet to probably 20 feet in different areas. And the request for the waiver essentially is that 25 feet with this layout and this size parcel would be excessive. If you can envision a 25-foot radius here, you would just end up creating additional paving that wouldn't serve any purpose. So, we typically look at, you know, the tractor trailers that would come in or the fire trucks and, and put the radius that's needed to accommodate the vehicles. So, that's the request for the waiver. So, they vary from probably 14 to 20 feet. Section 191-37B, a minimum of 15-foot of open space between the proposed parking and proposed building, and parking areas must be set back from property line, a minimum of 12 feet. The 15 feet of open space between the parking and the building is not provided. That's typically a fire protection and safety requirement. In this particular situation, there is good access all the way around the entire building, and you'll see in a lot of buildings that there's not vehicular access, you know, around all the sides. So, we felt the waiver was justifiable. Again, there is adequate access to all facets of the building. The 12 feet from the parking to the property line, let's see, 12 feet minimum between parking and property lines, again, with the size of the parcel that we have, we wouldn't be able to maintain the 12 feet and maintain the parking ratios for the building. And that's always been the case, not affected by any slides or property line issues. The 1C, 191-37C, 10 by 20 deep parking spaces. Our parking spaces are 9 by 18. And that's something we see in many municipalities and site plans. And it's been that way on this plan ever since the beginning, 9 by 18. Typically, a better use of the asphalt, really. D, 191-37E, a curb radius of 5 feet within parking areas. Again, that's a similar situation. Typically, we try to keep 5 feet minimum in parking areas, but in some situations, it allows us to put extra green with a minimum radius of 3 feet, and that's what we've done on this plan, gives you some flexibility in designing the islands. Also, again, allows you more capacity in your parking lot. Let's see, E, 191-37G4, all parking areas have at least one tree of 1 and 1/2-inch caliper for every 6 parking spaces in single rows. We don't comply with this, but we do have adequate perimeter landscaping along the front, and so, we felt that a waiver would be justified in that situation. front, and so we felt that a waiver would be justified in that situation. Section 191, this is F, 45A, requiring a minimum of utility easement width of 20 feet. The utilities, as I've shown on that sheet five, they have to snake behind existing property lines and structures, and there's not 20 feet available. So the easement width is 20 feet where it can be, and then where it needs to be, it's modified in width to fit the existing conditions.
What are the utilities that run back there?
Well, we have a, there's a water line, shown in blue, that will tap off, it's a four-inch water line that'll extend and come down and feed the pharmacy through an easement on the parcel. And a sewer line, which I believe is an eight-inch sewer line, or a six-inch sewer line with manholes, and then a cleanout to also allow the pharmacy, and the parsonage will tie in as well. And that's with the water as well. So extends along the back, services to Barnum and Circle, essentially water and sewer that'll be owned by the utility companies.
Okay.
G is 191, 45C, no permanent structure shall be permitted to be planted, placed, or set within the area of an easement. Permanent structures would include manholes, which of course, if you have a utility easement, you're going to need structures in there. So there'd be a waiver of that requirement.
That's the only structure that's in the easement? Does that make sense? That doesn't make sense.
No, that makes sense.
Is the grassy area back there, or is it parking lot?
There's trees, but I don't know if there'll be permanent structures. We do have a type M inlet in the back, which would pick up some stormwater.
In the easement, which is what you're, have the easement for?
Well, the easement's essentially really for the water and sewer.
Oh, okay.
So that that could traverse through the parcel to service the adjoining, yeah.
Does that make sense, Mr. Sullivan?
You're adding the stormwater pipe to an existing water and sewer easement.
Yeah, the stormwater pipe, yeah, will be in the, in the water and sewer easement.
No choice but to put an easement structure in there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. That was, I was just confused.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like there's always going to be structures in a utility easement. 191, 45C, that's permanent structures. Next one is H, 191, 78C2, partial waiver, requiring location of names and width of streets within 200 feet of any part of the process. We do, it's a partial waiver because we do have a lot of information, some even in excess of 200 feet from the property, but not in every direction. So it's a partial waiver, and of course, we'll provide anything that the township engineer feels is important that might be missing, and we think we've, we've done that.
Okay.
I think that was it for the waivers.
I think, anything other, kind of, I don't know if you have anything else, Mr. Profi, to present, just in terms of the operation itself, or, no?
No, I do not, Mr. Harvey.
All right, so we'll turn to comments and questions from board members. Mr. Galloway?
Yeah, Mr. Sullivan, do you have any concerns with the waivers as he described?
Looking at the plan, I thought that the encroachment in the easement with the sheds in the back of the property, is that, is that true, Vince?
There, there are sheds that show...
Mr. Fiorvani, if you can wait a second. Mr. Sullivan, ask your question again, so some of the board members didn't hear you.
It seems to me that the encroachment in the easement, the structures we were talking about, are the two sheds in the back of the property, not necessarily the storm sewer system.
Okay, yeah, I didn't specify on the, on the language. There's comment was made that there are sheds in the back on the adjoining properties that would be within the utility easement.
Not your sheds.
Correct. They're encroachments of the adjoining, and their fence also encroaches.
And what's your disposition of those sheds?
Okay, we've, we've added a note to the record plan as we were requested, that the applicant would agree to allow any existing structures to remain, and it would draft the appropriate language for that. So there is a note on the record plan, but it's more of a legal issue in, in terms of allowing them to remain. But again, just existing structures, and I think maybe the note says that, and it's on the record plan, that in the event that it was moved, that it would comply and be on their, on their property.
Mr. Galloway, is the translation that we're going to let them keep their sheds there, is that what he's saying?
Well, that's what we're trying to determine.
So basically, there's people that, that have...
They have their sheds, they're not going to move their sheds.
Right.
Right.
So we, yeah, we're allowing all the existing structures that are encroaching to remain.
But if they go to replace them, they'll have to observe.
Exactly. So if somebody comes and says, "I want to put a new shed up,"
The grandfather.
You know, then they should move it under their property.
You're grandfathering them, basically.
Right.
And if the, the owner of the easement, the utility company, needs to move the sheds or take them down, then that's, that's what's going to happen.
That's always been the policy.
Well, they may not know it's an easement, that's the thing, but oh, well, it's not on their property.
Yeah, but they're still on the property, though.
Yeah.
They're on the property.
That's why the easement is in 20 feet.
Yeah, we do, we do have the easement missing the backs of the sheds, but they're still encroaching on the property.
Is that, is that because the easement's not 20-foot wide in that section?
Are we still talking about the structures, is that what this is about?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to clear that up, I'm sorry.
All right, we'll be on that.
Yes, sir. Other than that, Mr. Galloway, no, I have no issues with the waivers they requested.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Boraski?
No, nothing.
Okay, Mr. Dents?
The property line in relation to the drugstore.
Yes.
You're pretty much kissing the drugstore, it looks like.
Yes, it's about two feet from the corner.
So what happens to the driveway that's there now? Isn't there a driveway next to the drugstore?
There's, there's definitely paving on that side.
Yep, there's, this, this property being left over and undeveloped and surrounded by developments, over the years, it just always happens where it starts getting encroached upon. The, the pharmacy does have an alternate driveway that exists, and I think over the years, at one time, they just decided, someone decided that it would just take both directions. So the parking lot does come in this area, and you can see the property line now in its correct location. Their driveway is where it belongs, parking area here. So this paving is scheduled to be removed, but then the driveway would just be where it belongs.
So driveway on the...
On the left side.
On the Burger King side.
No, the other side.
Other side.
Will be removed.
Okay, that was my question.
And is the owner of the pharmacy aware of that yet?
I haven't contacted them.
Okay.
And that's your, that's your property.
That'll be a fun...
They are involved, all the adjoining here are all involved in the process, they're getting the utility hookups and easements and also involved in a part of the process.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, you're going to say the same thing, I think.
With the residents and, I was, I was going to ask if the residents behind that have their sheds encroaching realize now that they have their sheds encroaching. Have they been aware of that?
They've been notified of, of the issue, and they've been asked to contact the credit union. One property owner has, and the other two have not.
Okay.
My dog to that shed, one of them is near it.
If they...
My concern is the driveway. I'm sure that the man that owns the pharmacy's not going to be happy about losing that driveway. He has no idea that's happening.
That's the thing, it's not his to begin with.
Oh, it's not his property, but I know.
It isn't, yeah, it's, that's going to be a fun phone call.
It's neither here nor there. That's your job.
He's going to get sewer access.
Oh, there you go, that's a good point. That's a good point. That's right, because you're letting him tap in.
Exactly.
Just the, the two waivers regarding the 25-foot proposed driveway coming into the location, and also the 15-feet open space between the parking and the building. Have we checked with our fire marshal to make sure that he was okay with that?
I believe fire marshal is okay with that. He, he did not raise it in his review letter.
Oh, okay, good. That's all I had.
Yeah, yeah. And you said, in terms of going back to that issue with the turning radius, the 25-foot turning radius, you've, you've run sort of a template that takes a, a fire truck through there? Because, I mean, as a credit union, you're not, I can't imagine you having tractor trailers come in to deliver anything, I mean, you know...
Yes, we, we have templates in our land development plans that show fire access equipment going completely through the site, in and out, and around the drive-through.
Okay. All right. Okay, now, that's all I had. Comments or questions from the public? See no hands. Any other, I guess we talked to Mr. Sullivan already, asked him his concerns. Mr. Clark?
Would the board want Mr. Profi to submit copies of the agreements with the owners of the sheds, so indicating that they don't have to move them, so we can take a look at them to make sure that the residents are not going to be required to move the sheds?
Is that their call, whether they have to move them or not? It's, it's...
Well, they are, they are encroaching into, into the property and into, maybe they're not in the easement, but they're on their property. I think the property owner is saying they can stay.
Oh, they're in the, in your property, not your easement, I get it, okay.
There's an easement between their property and the sheds.
Right, but it's still on their property. So absent that agreement and absent arguments over...
The letter of understanding be acceptable, something of that nature.
Yes, at least something, right, something that indicates that, so we know that the property owners, there won't be any issue, so you don't have property owners standing here in a year or two years yelling at you.
Yeah, that's not their property.
They don't know that yet. Well, they know it now, but you know...
Well, you know what's going to happen, they're going to come in and say, "Well, I got a permit for this shed."
Yeah, well, they don't have to move their shed.
15 years ago, and then, but...
Or they're going to sell...
That's fine, a letter...
Yeah, or they're going to sell the property, and, and the new owner's not going to realize, you know, that shit.
Yeah, that could be an issue too.
In fact, one of, one of the property owners did sell recently while this issue was going on, and we don't know if that had anything...
The new owner.
Non-response or not.
Oh, could be.
But the other issue with that is the, in terms of the, the fence that was to be placed in the rear of the property, in order for there to be uniformity across the rear of the property with the fence, if the shed's encroaching, it's going to be pretty hard to keep the fence line uniform across the rear of their property.
Fence necessary?
Is the fence necessary?
I would say yes.
Is there a fence behind the pharmacy in the...
Yes, there's residents behind her.
But do the residents have fences, or does the pharmacy have a fence?
The residents have fences.
These residents don't have fences.
It's not uniform. We anticipate putting a, a uniform fence along the rear of the property with landscaping on the credit union side of the fence. It was one of the issues that the planning commission asked us.
They asked you to put the fence up?
Well, they asked us to put...
Shield, some buffer sometime.
Some buffer back there.
But you guys are the ones that want the fence.
Correct, because of a number of issues.
Yeah, sure.
So that's why the letter of understanding...
It's always going to be the fence going through the sheds.
Right, well, it's, they may have to move the sheds.
That's, that's the concern.
That is a concern.
It's a concern, but I don't know if it's, if it's a concern necessarily. I mean, I, to me, the plan overall is fine, this is sort of, this is just a border dispute between two neighbors.
Yes, you're right.
You know?
Yeah, we're working it out, we can...
I'd like to see you work it out so they don't have to move their sheds, to be honest with you.
But, yeah.
I'd like to see you put a fence up.
There's some...
I think you need, you need a fence.
There's some clear direction for you.
Yeah.
So, okay, well, we'll leave that in your, your hands there in terms of trying to figure that out with the neighbors. Any other comments or questions? All right, so this would be resolution 15-4, okay? And this is preliminary and final, okay? So if board members are comfortable with that, that we can just approve as, as we have it presented. If board members prefer just preliminary, we could do it that way, too, just to make sure the motion is clear.
It's 15-5, even though you denied the last one, we're going to be creating a denial resolution, which will be 15-4.
Mr. Profi was very nervous walking up here, but...
So are we ready for a plan?
Nothing to do with a floodplain or a floodway.
Right. I mean, I, you know, I don't necessarily, I don't have a problem doing preliminary and final myself. Mr. Sullivan, do you see any problem doing preliminary and final?
I do not.
I don't know, it's up to other board members, my, my own beliefs.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay?
I thought there was some question about whether the building structure and paperwork...
The foundation issue and the, and the permit and the...
We, we'll stick with the resolution as prepared, we'll address all the building permits at that time.
Okay, okay.
Good.
All right. Okay, all right, so is there a motion to approve resolution 15-5?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, once again, looking forward.
All right, items five and six, both have to deal with our township park and our efforts to try and control the goose population. Those are two different services with two different companies that we've used in the past. I'll let Mr. Gray introduce the first, or item number five.
Recently, the township received a proposal from SNS Wildlife Services for Canada Goose Nest Management at the Falls Township Community Park. The cost of this service is $4,900 for egg addling and $325 for filing of a permit with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Commission. Total cost is $5,225. At this time, the board is asked to consider this proposal. In addition, Mr. Rick Shadle from SNS Wildlife is here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Board members, would we like to have Mr. Shadle sort of give us an idea of what's going on, or comments or questions, Mr. Shadle? Yes?
Yeah, I think we, I'd like to get it from him. Steve McGowan? Good evening.
Just give us an idea, Mr. Shadle, if you don't mind, just some of the work you've done in the past for us and, and this year, plans, I can think.
Sure, this year is pretty much the same as it's been over the last 10. We've got the map of the park over there, basically concerns all the bodies of water, the lake and its perimeter, the two large wetland areas.
Sorry? Problem with our microphone?
No. All right, there we go. That's better now? Yes?
That's, that's better, yeah. Thank you.
All right, very good. So it would include the large lake, the two wetland marsh areas, we've got the canal that runs through there, so basically the footprint of the park. We look for goose nests, we treat goose nests so that we're not growing geese on the park. Doesn't mean that geese cannot walk in with young geese, that has nothing to do with us. The large body of water on the other side of the road, I know that geese have been hatched over there, and they have decided to walk into your park because you have lots of grass. And there isn't so much on the other side, so they are walk-ins, that's correct. But everything's the same, cost is the same, and we have a great handle on this property, we know it very well. We're always looking in new locations because the geese sometimes will do things like that, find new places and try to hide and end up in the woods when they typically aren't in the woods, but, so, again, be starting in March, and it goes through late May and sometimes into the first, second week of June.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members for Mr. Shadle?
Mr. Galloway?
Oh, sorry.
No, as you said, we've been through this before. Thank you.
This is my first time.
Oh, okay.
Is the population decreasing?
No. That's correct, it's, it's, it's not, but it has nothing to do with managing goose nests. It has to do with you're on the Atlantic Flyway, and it has to do with you're surrounded with water, and it has to do with a need for more management of an adult goose population. Okay, that's the only way you're going to get the numbers down. And there is some of that going to happen with some dogs, that's not our company, but we are just to treat nests, find eggs, and make sure that we're not growing geese on the site. So your, your question is, I can tell by your eyes, is, so why do we do this? Because it would only get worse if we did, didn't do it, and if you have young geese on the property that are born on the property, they'll return to the property in many cases, so you're growing habitual geese on the property. And then the other thing is, is that when you're trying to move geese off the property, adult geese, with border collies or other methods, young geese that can't fly present a problem. So we don't want those young geese on the site. So running the border collies when you've got young geese on the property is a problem. And so...
Why is that a problem, again?
Because they can't get away from the dogs.
That's a good thing, isn't it?
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna argue against it. I mean, I'm, I'm not against that, but, but you run afoul of federal and state regulations. So there is a, there is a requirement from the game commission not to run border collies when there's goslings on the property. That is a requirement, so...
Interesting.
I'm all about it, but there are certain things you can do and can't do, and you certainly don't wanna get a black eye over this, so...
Are they the same, I don't wanna sound like the questions are off the wall, but is, are they the same geese all the time?
We've already asked these questions. You're just way behind.
It's all right, it's all right.
I'm happy to answer them. I mean, that's, you know, I waited, I'll answer them.
Today, residents, full-time residents?
Mr. Marianne is about to fall out of his seat, 'cause he's shimmying back and forth.
He wants the geese to pay the IT.
He's my friend. Five years ago, we did a roundup, it might have been six years ago. Roundup is where you come in and physically take away the adult geese that during the month of mid-June to mid-July cannot fly. Okay? They become landlocked. They lose their adult flight feathers. So you do a roundup. You basically gather them up and then they're gone. So if you wanna get to zero, that's the way you do it. But the problem is, the township can't do that, because the township has not, and according to the USDA, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and the Pennsylvania Game Commission, has not done enough harassment to get a roundup. That's the bottom line.
Have you been doing this ten years?
No, five or so.
No, it's been five since our last roundup.
Five years ago, we did a roundup.
We didn't, we didn't take them all.
We did then.
You did?
Absolutely.
I wasn't around.
And a whole other flock came across the street and said, "Here we go."
Well, here's the problem. Here's the problem when you do a roundup, when you get to zero. Okay? When, when you mow the grass, it stays pretty good for a little while, and then it grows back. Geese are no different, okay? At the end of two years, because there was no management of those geese, new geese coming on, driving them off, that did not happen. You get back to a hundred, two hundred, three hundred geese.
So, so you had mentioned just a second ago that we haven't done enough to harass the geese. I mean, we've had the dogs for, what, three years?
This is our third year.
It's 2013, we...
Was the first year?
Yes.
All right, so this will be, I thought the first year...
It'll be our third year, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, twelve. Twelve, we did it, it was like just a trial run. He didn't even pay, he didn't even charge us, I don't think, did he?
Yeah, you're right.
In thirteen, we...
My dog does it for free almost every day, you know?
Not supposed to admit that. So what exactly have we, I mean, what more do we have to do?
Well, the, 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 dogs are a good tool, but they're not an end-all. And the problem with your site is, you've got a seventy-five acre lake. So the geese learn real quick. I've got a hundred acres of mowed, fine fescue, grasses that I'm gonna eat like a cow, and I'm not going anywhere. I'll just go in the lake, because the dogs are not gonna drive me off the lake. So if you had a one-acre pond, the dogs would work...
Right.
...in terms of driving them beyond that. I'm not saying don't do the dogs, that's not what I'm here about, but they have limited capabilities on the site. So there's other things that need to be done in terms of managing those geese, and it's daytime efforts that are beyond dogs. It is physical chasing by people, it is noise harassment. There is also a need here, and this is pushed by the USDA, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, they all have their fingers in this stuff, for a limited take, where a number of geese are killed in front of all the other geese...
This is the craziest thing.
...in a safe manner, so...
What safe manner would that be?
What safe manner would that be?
You kill the geese in front of the other geese.
Right, that can be done with a shotgun.
That's a safe manner.
So it's not safe for the geese, obviously?
It's not safe for the geese. So there's a, a whole lot of stuff that goes into this, and I'm not saying...
So what you just said is that one of their accepted methods is to round up a bunch of them...
Right.
And get them all in a circle, and then shoot another one.
Well, no, that's not correct.
And they have to watch.
That's not correct.
But to watch.
That's not correct.
Leave the geese...
So, this is done safely in, you know, in other municipal areas. It's done safely in business parks. It's done with timing, you know, when there's not folks there, when there's, you know, the break of dawn, the gates are closed, boom, it's over with, done. Those things are done very precisely. So for us that are in this business, it doesn't sound harebrained, for folks that sit and look at this and go, "Golly gee, they're gonna bring, you know, bazookas in," it's not that. It's very precise, so...
Yeah, it's, it's...
I find funny, I like the idea of lining up the geese, like, do they really understand what you're doing to the other goose?
They do. Geese understand dying. They do understand death. So animals do understand it. But it's not, again, this is, like I said, two years ago, and I'll say it again, and I'll say it every year I come, goose management is mowing the grass.
Yeah.
If you don't manage it, you're gonna be neck-deep in it. And Falls Township is neck-deep in geese.
Neck-deep in it, no matter what. We've been managing it for, you said, ten years?
Not enough. You're not managing enough. All I'm doing is eggs. That's only a part of the picture.
What else would you do?
What else would I do?
What would be your proposal to...
I've already presented it. I've, 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 Brian, or...
I think we tried to round them up last year, or two years ago.
We haven't harassed them.
We didn't harass them. So you're saying that the slaughtering in front of others is the next step for that?
It is a part of it. I mean, if your goal is to get a roundup, if you, if you get a roundup and get yourself back to zero with resident geese, then you have a full-fledged management program that comes in after that. So that new geese that fly in and think, "What a great place this is," find out that it's not a great place because of the efforts that are made to manage this. There's townships, boroughs, business parks all over Bucks County that do this thing. They manage their geese. Okay? I have contracts that extend well beyond getting rid of eggs.
Question for you.
Yes?
We do a roundup.
Yeah.
We get down to goose zero.
Right.
We just scooped up the last goose.
Correct.
Put him in your truck, he's gone. Now we have no geese to park.
That's correct.
What do you do to keep the other geese that are gonna be coming across the street in a minute?
Well, you use border collies. You use people management, which is moving the geese off. It means boats on the water to drive them off.
But we can't do that ourselves.
You have to hire somebody to do that, in most cases. I mean, in the past, when, when, when Bill was here and the efforts he made, you know, there's folks that, that patrol the park, and, you know, if the geese ruin the grass, they'd, you know, drive a truck after them, and the goose, you know, the geese would walk into the water.
We totally can't do that.
Well, you, you, you really can't, but that's what was done. But the geese learn all that. So there has to be a number of items that are used interchangeably, day, night, dogs, people, noise. And again, all these things sound like you'll never be able to have a park, but they're very unobtrusive. It's, it's done at certain times, it's very predictable, but it, you know, it's gonna cost some money. Bottom line. And there's plenty of folks that we can give as a reference for this kinda work that you can call. Yes, sir?
I was gonna say, the money's one thing, but it being effective is...
Right.
Really, you know?
Absolutely.
No matter what we're gonna do, we're gonna get rid of the geese, unless you have a full-time crew of people down there chasing geese. We do this every year. We spend money, we add all eggs...
A goose officer?
Yeah, a goose officer, don't even joke. We add all eggs, and every year you go down there, and there's a whole parade of little baby geese coming through, and wherever they're coming from, I have no idea. If you say they're not coming from, they're walkers. Coming from the black lake on the other side of the road there, maybe, but...
That's why it's management.
Yeah. Whatever we do, it's not working, 'cause there's tons of geese. If you play soccer on that field, Mr. Watkins from the soccer club is here, and he'll tell you that the kids are playing in goose dew. I'll be nice.
And the, and the dogs push them from there, from the field to the lake.
Yeah, that's all the dogs do, for those watching at home.
The dogs push them there to the baseball field that's located a mile from the park.
Right. The dogs train the geese not to land on the soccer field, 'cause they're gonna get chased by geese. So we've managed with the geese, learn, don't land there. But doesn't mean we're getting them out of the park, they just go to the other side of the park. And that's why everywhere you go fishing or walking, there's a goose mess there and everywhere else.
It is solvable.
So is this only for soccer fields? Do they run the dogs only on soccer fields?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just that side. That's why they're on the other side, yeah.
And on the trail.
I think they'll take them anywhere we want, really. They'll, I mean, in terms of, that's, you're moving on to agenda number six here, in terms of the other company that does the dogs. SNS doesn't offer that service, but, you know, they'll basically take them anywhere we want, I think, and then just...
I don't think it would be effective, though, from what you told us.
I think we just ask them. Yeah, it might not be.
Part of the issue with, with Falls Township is where you are on the planet. I mean, you're in a challenging area. If you, you know, go to Lebanon County, it's, it's, there's less of an issue, or...
Mr. Marianne, you need to take a breath, we need to breathe.
Yeah, Mr. Marianne, no.
We need to breathe. Exhale.
So...
I can't wait to hear what he has to say.
The sheriff is writing for me, knows I went to my file.
Yeah, I know, I know. No, but I, I, I hear what Mr. Shadle's saying, and I know it is frustrating, and I, you know, it is just bad geography. I think that we're, happen to be in this highway of goose, you know...
In the flyway.
Right, the flyway, the flight path there.
But the geese are territorial, so...
Sure.
We're not gonna get rid of them no matter what. So if we had these geese that live there, they're gonna let, not let the other ones come to our park.
That's not correct.
No, I don't know if that's, you know, they're looking for more friends.
They're not territorial. The only time they're territorial is when they're sitting on a nest, and that's only a few feet.
Listen, I took my dog, I have a mutt, and he's belligerent. And I took him down to the park one day, 'cause we couldn't go down to buy the boat ramp. And he chased the geese off the soccer field. I said, "Okay, good job." I said, "Come on, let's go up around the path, and we're gonna flank him on the other soccer field." So he flew from here to here. So we go around there, and I take the dog, and I said, "All right, go chase them." So he starts chasing them, and them geese turn around, they chased us. And I ran up, running from the geese with my dogs.
That's when you needed to turn around and chase back. And see, that's what folks don't understand.
There's about a hundred and fifty of them.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Geese are much more afraid of you than you...
I'm not sacrificing my puppy for a goose.
Well, that's why you have to hire somebody that I guess will lay their body down.
Okay. So, all right. So the adventures of Clinton and Jeff Dent, the public has no idea, this is just like chapter five or so of, we've, you know, chapter twelve. Yeah. This would be better books than the ones Earth he was gonna write. But in terms of this issue, I mean, I, you know, Mr. Shadle's talking about, you know, other, other activities that can be done, and he has submitted in the past almost sort of, almost a menu of different options that we could choose from. I did have a conversation with Mr. Andrews earlier today, our park and rec director, and he had said, just paraphrasing, you know, what he said is that he's very satisfied with the work SNS has done, that they're very responsive, they're very reliable, they're there when they say they're gonna be there, they do the, do the job. I mean, I don't know, do board, I just wanna say, do board members want to, you know, obviously, we could approve this, this evening, and then see if Mr. Shadle wants to give us other options to look at, you know, at our next meeting in a couple of weeks, and we can take a look at those. Or we can wait and just not do this necessarily tonight, and just wait and look at everything in two weeks. You know, it's, that's just a couple of options that I can see, you know, with this particular issue. You know, I mean, I don't know which, which one board members prefer. You know, if we have this one in front of us now, we certainly can, can act on this one, and then just take a look at other options, you know, next, in two weeks from now.
Yeah. I, I would like to see us do more, if it, if it's gonna be effective.
Oh, it's gonna be effective, it's just you have to do, you've got, gotta do enough. And, and with Falls Township Park, it has to be a twelve-month program. I mean, it's great when it's snowing on the ground and the, and the lake freezes. I mean, that's great, 'cause they're gonna go elsewhere, but nobody else is doing anything there either. But this is a twelve-month management plan you're gonna have to do here. Other, there's other places that we work, we don't have to do that, 'cause it's not necessary, but you guys, it's, there's really no option.
I'd like to hear it. Okay?
I wasn't questioning you or whether it was effective or not, you getting rid of our geese. I just don't think anything we do is ever gonna get rid of the geese completely.
It may not, but certainly I think it'll cut down enough where, you know, the, the problem with, you know, the...
Right.
Goose droppings everywhere is, is a lot less.
You'll always be challenged, and those challenges will come at different times, harder than some others, but it, so when the challenges come, you take appropriate action to deal with those, and let the geese know that they're not welcome there, whether it's on water or on land.
Yeah, I was gonna say, on the sledding hill, there must have been a hundred of them. The one day I was there in the, in the summer...
But that's what's necessary, to do more is what's necessary to get another permit. When we got the permit before, it was a different sheriff in town, as it were, not your sheriff, but you know what I'm talking about.
Right.
It's, the rules have changed.
Okay. Okay. Other thoughts or questions? So what's the pleasure of the board in terms of this proposal we have in front of us here?
You wanna do a public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Sorry, Mr. Marianne.
You answer a public comment?
Take away, I know you've been looking forward to this, you know?
All year.
Apparently you got, apparently you got so excited, you jumped up and hit your head.
My file, you know that.
Look, our community park provides this landscape and all the features that geese love to respond to. You have short grass, and you have a lack of natural predators, so geese love that. They come here, they're happy here. Now, first place, geese are especially irksome, especially when they nest on our property and have that aggressive behavior that they have, as your dog learned, and they attack anyone who comes near their nest. They do that. Second, geese are nuisance birds. They're not lovely little things, especially on property littered with their droppings day after day after day. They deposit up to a pound of droppings every day. If you had a dog that acted like these geese, you would be prosecuted, and your dog would be seized according to our nuisance code right here in Falls Township. But not the geese, their aggressive behavior, their filthy behavior is tolerated because they are protected by law, because that is our government in action. The options we have, I agree, are limited, because you've got the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, which protects Canadian geese, their nests, and their eggs. That's your government in action. Who in the world would ever enacted anything like that? We've been doing egg addling, which is really a failed attempt at birth control, and the same thing with collie patrols. They don't eliminate the geese, they chase the geese. same thing with collie patrols, they don't eliminate the geese, they chase the geese. So, what I'm saying, year after year, we keep throwing nickels at this problem, let's throw a dime at it, and get rid of the geese, do something that eliminates the geese. Again, I'll tell you, you can treat the area with products that absolutely make the area unpalatable to geese, they're safe for humans, these chemicals, and they're safe for wildlife. There's, I'll tell you again, Flight Control Plus, we've never tried it, rejects it, and rejects it plus. I'm not gonna go into the description of each one, and what they do, they eliminate geese, they don't chase them, and wait for them to come back. Why don't we try something with a more permanent solution? Please, let's do that. Spend the money, get rid of the geese, don't chase them, they'll only come back.
I wanted to just say one thing about the dogs, that, they're, the use of the dogs isn't to get rid of the geese, they never said they were gonna get rid of geese, they just trained the geese not to land on the soccer field, which I know, that, all that does is keeps the goose duty off of the soccer field, is the idea of the, the dogs, not to get rid of the geese.
Eliminate the geese.
I agree. Round them up and get rid of them.
Look into those three products.
Okay.
They eliminate geese.
Another hand in the back, Mr. Gartner?
Yes.
One of the methods that a lot of communities do use, is a controlled hunt, and what you can do, is have a lottery system, allow a limited number of hunters per day, or not per day, pick like, two days maybe, a week, where you keep the park closed till 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning, no one's allowed in, just the hunters come in in the morning, because in September, you're allowed to kill eight birds a day, with no, with possession limit up to 25 per person, so you can have a lottery for that, and then the rest of the season, when you're in the migration, is only three birds a day, but it will start to slowly limit the resident repopulation, your, your migrators are always going to get your migrators in every year, you can't do anything about that, because they breed up in Canada and come down, whereas your residents, when you start eliminating your resident, your older resident geese, you won't have as many baby geese the next year, that's just one of the options I didn't hear mentioned, and I don't know if it had been mentioned in the past, but you can do a limited controlled hunt once, twice a week, maybe.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Shado, would you mind commenting on those two ideas that were raised?
Sure.
We've talked about the chemicals before.
Sure, Flight Control and Rejects It, they're, they're all good products, there's science behind them, they're expensive products, they're not foolproof, they don't eliminate geese, they reject it, and both the Flight Control, both, you know, they either make the grass taste bad, or they make it unpalatable, they give them an upset stomach, problem is, they're mowed off, they're not permanent, they're sprayed, they're mowed off, they're sprayed, they're mowed off, so you have to keep reapplying them, I'm not against those products, in fact, we use them in very specific situations, you've got a lot of grass to spray, to you and I, we can't really tell that that product is on the grass, I mean, if you pull blade up, you can see it if you look close, but to the geese, when they start to feed on that product, they do see it, they see in a different light spectrum, that's part of the mystery of Flight Control, is that they're able to see treated grass and untreated grass, so, problem is, you have to be 100% treated, because the geese know the difference, and I have experienced geese that have eaten through it, they just put up with it, get used to it, whatever, so, I know the products well, I know the representatives well, I use the products, and I would not recommend them with the amount of green grass that you have, we use them on very spot applications, putting greens, we use them, small islands of grass, around heliport pads, and things like that, very sensitive spots, very limited areas that you're trying to protect, so, that's my take on that. In regards to controlled hunt, I mean, hey, I'm all good for geese getting shot, I'd just be on public record for that, but, you know, there's pushback on having an expert marksman doing this, as opposed to having, you know, a lottery where we have good folks that understand, you know, point a gun in the right direction, but I don't know that that's something that you guys want to head in, I mean, it doesn't offend me one bit, but, you know, you're got some safety zone issues as well, and I think you're gonna get a lot of pushback on that, so.
Pushback because it's, it's like a neighborhood park kind of area, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But, can be done.
Okay.
So, what, what, if we, when would you start addling eggs? What's the timeline?
Well, it varies a little bit, but by mid-March, we're out looking, some of it depends on, you know.
That's where I was going with this, I was, I was coming here tonight, again, this is like, my sixth year, I've heard this, you know, and I was saying to myself, listen, I'm opposed to this, we spent this money, we spent this money, it doesn't do anything. I'd like to hear Plan B, I'd like to see a Chinese menu of options, of what we can do, with the costs, other than, not, I'm not saying not addle eggs, but beyond addling eggs.
Sure.
Rather than approve this tonight, I'm not saying I'm not gonna approve this, if the rest of you want to approve it.
And I want to go even one step further, don't give us the options, just say, if you want to control your geese, you want to get rid of them, you want me to kill them next year or this year, this is what you need to spend, because if you leave it up to us, we're gonna pick and choose, and then you're gonna say to us next year, well, you know, you picked A, B, and C, you didn't pick D and E.
It won't be any problem for me to give you that, because it's already been done, I mean, it's available, I would tell you that if you don't do, if, if you say, we're not gonna do anything, I would tell you, you cannot not addle eggs, treat eggs, even if we didn't do it, you cannot not do that, okay, that is just really bad, bad medicine, okay, you're gonna have geese have a nest, and you're gonna have people getting chased by geese, different than what you've experienced, that was something, a whole different ballgame than what you had, you get a mean gander, and you got
I got bit by one when I was a kid, it hurts.
It hurts like, really bad, and you get lumped by a wing, and somebody gets knocked down the ground, and you guys have entered a whole new realm of reality here, so, I would not be omitting that ever.
No, yeah, and we're, we're talking about doing more, actually, and that was Mr. Dent's point.
We can do that, we can do that.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right, and get rid of the geese, if you have an option to get rid of the geese, rather than just, because controlling the geese, as we've been doing, addling eggs, is fine, maybe that doesn't create new geese in our park, but the geese are still coming to their park, they're strutting right down the road, you know, with their babies, just giving you dirty looks when you try and drive by, because you can't run them over, because you're in the park, they're not going away, and it's not helping. Go ahead, Mr. Mariani.
I just wanted to talk about one of the products that they rejected, the Fargus, that's an agent that's used without harming non-target birds or other animals, okay? After several exposures to this, the geese leave, they do not return for the season. It's $185 a gallon, and it treats 16 acres, so, he's familiar with it, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, if we were to approve both things this evening, and we do have, obviously, the, the one thing, the filing of the permit, okay, which I'm assuming should be done earlier rather than later, the earlier the better, would be $325, excuse me, the egg addling program's $4,900, so I'm looking, you know, if we do both of these things this evening, and then in two weeks, take a look at more, we'd be looking at $5,225 this evening, or we could just approve the, the $325 for the permitting process, and then hold off on everything else, but just, you know, there's a couple different ways we could go, what is the pleasure of the board?
It, it doesn't matter to me, I, I know that we want to do the addling.
Right.
If we vote on tonight, or, or, as, as Mr. Rocco said, we just vote on the whole plan, the next time out, the plan that rids us of, does the best job of doing a complete job.
I'd say let's pay for the permit, I mean, we'd be getting different permits if we went to Plan B.
Yeah, what, what do you think we should do?
Well, there's one, there's three permits, one you cannot get yet, but there's the egg treatment permit, and then there's the limited take permit, I've already been told, it falls once, it, they're gonna get it, okay, and then the roundup permit would come in a subsequent year, perhaps even next year, if, if the board wanted to proceed with it.
What's the limited take?
Yeah.
That is going in and taking some birds out, that's
Can you do that?
There's a limit to how many, basically, there's a limit to how many?
Right, the permit would state how many, and we would do that, yeah.
Do you do that at night, early in the morning?
We would do that very early in the morning, at break of day, you know, we would work that with, you know, with the police, let them know what's going on, the gates get closed, they get padlocked.
Does this involve guns?
Yes.
This is the shotgun.
Are you interested?
This is the
Are you going to join us?
I don't want to be anywhere near that.
Okay.
So.
Up to the board, what's, what direction?
Well, I was gonna ask, I mean, we, we want to do more, so, what do you, you just want us to do the permit, do you want us to?
Wait till next meeting?
What makes sense?
We have two more meetings in Feb, one more in February, one in more, early March.
I, I would, I'm here, I got two hours and 20 minutes to get home.
You want to go home with the?
I'd love to go home with a permit, to, or with the, to at least get our addling done, and then bring the rest of it back next time.
I think if we're looking to do more, we're at least gonna do the addling and the permit, so I think we should move forward this for tonight.
Okay, all right, so is there a motion then, to approve the expenditure of $5,225 to SNS Wildlife for goose control at the community park?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Bransky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shado, appreciate all your time.
We'll see you in two weeks or a month.
Drive safe.
Okay, thank you.
Item six is Consider Proposal from Geese Management, we mentioned this quite a bit over the past, you know, half hour or so, Geese Management is a different company, they specifically use dogs, border collies, that will go out and chase geese off of specific areas, okay, of the, of the park, they, their contract is a weekly service, $200 a week, and I know, I talked briefly, I guess, with Mr. Andrews, did we use these guys a lot or at all last year, I'll let him get up and speak and talk about this a little bit.
Good evening, we learned a lot about geese tonight. We did not use them last year, unfortunately, that was part of the transition, when Jess, Jessica and I came in, we had a contract with them, I wasn't aware of it, he never contacted me, so, it did kind of fall by the wayside, unfortunately, once I did find that out, it did reach out to him, because I think this needs to be part, I think this discussion's really good tonight, because I think we need to do more, border collies are a part of that, I could work with Mr. Shado on some more, you know, in-depth ideas, you know, going forward, I think, you know, to eliminate these geese, I think most of you are out there this summer, playing kickball, it was pretty bad, and we had the kids out there in the fall, and obviously, the soccer club deals with it on a, you know, continuous basis, so, I think the border collie program is essential, an essential, an essential part that we need to pursue also, and as part of a bigger, comprehensive program.
And like I said before, I remember when this gentleman came, his dogs, he lets them out in the morning, and they swings by, and the dogs chase all the geese off the soccer field.
Right.
And the object is to, the dogs train the geese, so the geese know not to land on that soccer field.
Correct.
It doesn't mean that other geese might not try, but then he comes back in the afternoon, chases them again, and it is effective.
It is.
All this is gonna do is keep the soccer field clean, so when little kids are playing on it, they're not.
And the softball field, we're gonna try to get them over there, too.
That's fine, too.
Yeah.
And this is, this is something, he, and this gentleman who, who runs this program isn't here this evening, he's away, I think on vacation or something, couldn't make it this evening, but he stated, this isn't something they'll do, if there are kids out there playing, if there's games going on or practices, he doesn't come out, just randomly let dogs loose, obviously, he's
That's correct.
very conscious of the fact that, you know, if there are people in the area, he doesn't do this, that's why he tries to come early in the morning, as Mr. Dent said, or later in the afternoon, maybe, when it's not as busy, but, you know, so that's, that's sometimes a concern, people are a little worried that their kids are playing, and all of a sudden there's a dog running around, that's not, you know, they're very, very conscious about all that, so, other comments or questions regarding this?
No, let's pile it on.
Can we get a, an added price for the little leagues, too?
I can look into it, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Is this to, what is it, $200 a week?
Yes, for 10 weeks, correct.
Maybe we can get, you know, get an idea what that would cost.
Yeah, I can, I'll give them a call tomorrow, absolutely.
We're talking about soccer fields and the softball field, we have the same issues.
Yeah, yeah, they're going right, right across the street, pretty much, so, yeah, that's definitely a good, a, good thing to check into, I agree.
All right.
Yep.
It's a good idea, okay. All right, so then we'd be looking for approving the proposal from Geese Management for services for 2015.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'm sorry.
If the board considers moving forward this project, we'd want to subject this to an indemnity agreement with Geese Management
Okay.
before it's finalized.
Okay, that makes sense, all right, so is there a motion to approve the seasonal contract with Geese Management, in the amount of $200 a week?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Bransky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, item number seven, Consider Proposal from FX Brown for Act 101 Recycling Grants, Mr. Gray?
Yes, the township received a proposal from FX Brown for the annual Act 101 Recycling Report, this is done on an annual basis, and this report provides the tonnage from residential and commercial waste towers operating within Falls Township, it is reported to DEP, based on the total amount of tonnages reported each year, township is eligible for grant funding, the last two years, the township will have received over $100,000 in grant funding from the state, the total cost of this proposal from FX Brown to complete the application is $3,500, this amount is similar to what we paid last year as well, and we have used this company, FX Brown, on and off since 1999, the board has asked to consider this proposal.
Okay. All right, so comments or questions from Mr. Gray?
No questions.
The one issue, do you have, you have the December 11th, 2014 letter in front of you, Mr.?
Yes, I do.
For the main paragraph, their evaluation of township meeting and Act 101 requirements, I'm looking at the third line up from the bottom, where it mentions that DEP has different requirements in terms of publishing information.
Yeah.
And my question is, it does mention that, you know, having information on a website counts, but there should be something else, and we do do the, the township newsletter a couple of times a year, and I'm, I'm pretty sure we have recycling information in there.
Yes, I believe we do.
So I'm wondering if, if maybe we could let FX Brown know that, because they might not realize we're doing that, and
Okay.
make sure that's something they're aware of.
Social media as well.
Right.
Sure.
Yeah, so, okay, that was all, the only point I wanted to make. Okay, and essentially, this means we do get money back, based on how much recycling is done, is that?
Yes, throughout the township, yes.
All right, and that's something that we've talked about before, I mean, you know, a few years ago, Waste Management came to us and told us that their recycling program had changed, and so, it was no longer as restrictive as it used to be, it used to be that, you know, only certain kinds of plastic could be in recycling, it used to be that you couldn't throw away, you know, cardboard, because it was too thick, or something like that, that has all changed, and so, pretty much, there's a tremendous amount now that can be recycled, any kind of cardboard box can be recycled, the, the rolling, the cardboard rolls inside toilet paper, paper towels, that can be recycled, cereal boxes can be recycled, all of that can be thrown out, I mean, I, you know, I know I've been doing it for a couple of years now, and I've basically moved, on recycling days, I've got, you know, half a can of trash and two full cans of recycling, and that obviously brings money into the township, the more people that do that, because I do see even some of my neighbors, and I've kind of said something to them once in a while about it, they'll get some kind of, they'll buy something big, and then they'll put the cardboard box out for trash, and not for the recycling, and that's something that, you know, we'll try and work to change, we try to get the message out through these meetings and other things, but FX Brown is a company that's helping us do that, too, so, just something to, you know, we can help out ourselves as a township by just recycling more, you know, okay, and that's all I had.
Yeah, actually, you, you mentioned the website, it looks like there's an additional cost of $800, they'll send us some information we can put on our website, can you find out what our return would be on that?
Sure.
You see that down on the?
On the bottom.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I missed, I did miss that.
Yeah, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
If we get more back, right?
Okay, all right, so we could always approve that later, that extra 800, if we want to find out what we get for it, right. All right, any public comment? Okay, is there a motion then, to approve the?
It smells something burning.
Yes.
It's 9:30.
It's been going for about an hour.
Really?
Let's get this going before we
Yeah, yeah, we got a couple more things to get here, and we're out in the, we'll be out in the parking lot pretty soon.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Sucking at something inside, probably.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve.
$3,500 for FX Brown.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Bransky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Consider Adopting Ordnance Repealing Replacing Chapter 131 Flood Plane Management, Consider Authorizing to Advertise an Ordnance Repealing Chapter 209, Ms. Gallagher worked a lot on this, in conjunction with Mr. Bennett and Mr. Jones from our engineering firm, to give you a chance to explain this.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, this is a rather lengthy ordinance, which is required by FEMA to be adopted by the township by mid-March, so this would become effective mid-March, what this does is, it strengthens some of the regulations that apply to properties that are located within the floodplains, which were discussed earlier this evening, and it also creates certain definitions, for example, one of the major changes that we're making is defining substantial improvements on a per-project basis, rather than a cumulative basis, what that does is allows property owners that are located within the floodplain to make renovations to their properties, without having to raise the structure, as long as those renovations are 50, less than 50% of the value of the structure, certain other municipalities are defining that on a cumulative basis, so that little projects add up, and eventually, the structure does have to be raised out of the floodplain, Mr. Bennett can describe some of the, some of the other details of the, the ordinance, if the board wishes, but.
Okay, so this is something, I just asked Mr. Bennett, this is something we're doing to try and get ourselves more in line with what FEMA does, or, or help us out a little bit, maybe even getting the community rating system, getting some rebates and things?
FEMA has set a minimum standard that we have to meet, we're, we've always exceeded it a little bit, there were a couple of things we had to add to it, but as we exceed it, our community rating system will go higher, which will result in lower premiums for the people who are in the floodplain.
Okay, all right, comments or questions for Mr. Bennett or Ms. Gallagher?
No, I just appreciate the per-project, it, it would mean a lot, it does mean a lot, right, significant.
It could, yes.
Yes, I know that with all the destruction we had from Hurricane Sandy, and all the rebuilding down in the shore communities, some of the requirements that these people had were to raise their homes, it was, it was killing them, some of these people, you know, and
Right.
we, we wouldn't want to make that same mistake in our community, but this is great, it's perfect.
Right, and this does meet the minimum requirements for FEMA.
You got it.
Mr. Dent?
No.
Mr. Rocco?
No, just thank you for putting all the, the time into this.
Yeah.
Sure.
And it is something, we're, we're adding this, and in the process of doing this, we have, we already have a sort of existing part of our code that does deal with some of these issues, and so we're gonna be repealing that, because there's no sense having it in two different places, you know, and, and being repetitive.
Correct.
So that's kind of what we're looking at here.
And this does create a right of appeal for the property owners, if Mr. Bennett issues a determination, it would be appealable to the zoning hearing board.
And, and we're hoping that in the next couple, you know, several weeks, when the FEMA maps become official, the newer FEMA maps, that a very large chunk of, a large number of the people that are currently identified as being in a floodzone here in Falls Township will not be anymore, and so this won't apply to as many people, if all that happens the way we hope it does, there still will be some areas of the township that will be in the floodzone, and our thoughts are, what we've been hearing is that sometime in the next year and a half, those maps will change, and those, even more people will come out, and those, even more people will come out. So we're definitely heading in the right direction after a very long struggle, and Mr. Bennett has been, you know, key to that, you know, as we've been fighting for, for the residents here in this township to try and get, you know, some, I guess, some realistic determination as to whether or not they're in a floodplain. And then, because it does affect how you sell your property, insurance you're paying, you know, getting a mortgage, et cetera. So I don't imagine any public comment. So this would be Ordinance 15-1. Okay. And this would be repealing and replacing Chapter 131 of the floodplain management, you know, ordinances that we have, okay? And it would also authorize, I guess we're doing one simultaneous motion here, authorize advertisement to repeal Chapter 209?
You probably do them as two separate motions.
Yeah, it's separate one.
Yeah, adopt the ordinance and then authorize advertising for the other one.
All right, okay. So let's do authorize advertisement, Ordinance 15-1. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Or, excuse me, to adopt Ordinance 13, 15-1. All right, motion made and seconded to adopt Ordinance 15-1. Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocker?
Yes.
And a second motion would be to authorize the advertisement to repeal Ordinance 209, which talks about flood hazard areas, which now is redundant. We don't need it.
It's just Section 33.
Section 33, sorry. Chapter 209, Section 33. Okay. Is there a motion to authorize advertisement?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Can I just add a couple of notes for the public out there?
Absolutely.
The new maps for FEMA will go into effect March 16th of 2015. I talked to, I was in contact with somebody from FEMA. They said them maps will be available online through FEMA Map Service Center a couple of days after that. Matt Markie and I are going to put a link on the website, so it'll take you right there. You can put your address in, click View. It's still going to be confusing, but it'll give you something to play with and you can find your property on the maps to see where you are. And again, as Mr. Harvey said, another year and a half, there's going to be further improvements in our area. So don't get discouraged if you're not completely out.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, item nine, consider authorization to advertise for landscaping services at the township facilities. Mr. Gray?
Falls Township has various locations throughout the township that require landscaping services, including mulching, planting flowers, weeding. The township used WDB landscaping for this service last year. At this time, the board has asked to consider authorizing advertisement for landscaping services for the township for 2015.
Okay. Comments or questions from board members?
None.
Yeah, what, do you remember what the bid was, came in last year?
Last year was $19,615.
And has anything changed from last year?
Yeah, there was a couple of items that Mr. Arneau requested, I believe. The entrance to Penns Grant was added, and I think there was one or two other locations. I think off of Lower Morrisville Road, there was an additional location as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. This was their first year. Was Mr. Arneau, he was pleased?
Yes, he was.
And they weren't the low bidder last year. There was a fault with the low bidder's?
CNS.
Yeah.
Yes. They were the landscaper for 2013.
Okay.
No other comments or questions? Is there a motion to authorize advertisement for landscaping services?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Item 10 is considered proposal from D&amp;M Fireworks LLC for fireworks for the Falls Township Family Festival, Cue for the Troops event. Mr. Gray?
Yes, Rich DePaulito from the Fire Marshal's Office has secured a quote from D&amp;M Fireworks LLC for a fireworks display for the Cue for the Troops Family Festival event to be held June 5th and 6th. The board has asked to consider this proposal for $9,000.
Okay. Comments or questions? For Mr. Gray regarding the fireworks proposal?
I think this is what we spent last year, nine grand, right?
Yes, it is.
Is it the same company?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And the Cue for the Troops is when?
June 5th and 6th, Friday, June 5th, Saturday, June 6th.
And the Family Festival should be June 6th, okay? So people can start putting that down on their calendars. All right, if there's any, you know, public comment? See no hands. Okay, is there a motion then to approve or to accept the contract, $9,000, D&amp;M Fireworks LLC for fireworks at the Family Festival?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocker?
Yes.
All right, item 11, consider authorization to advertise an ordinance adopting a certain intermunicipal agreement regarding purchase of pool chemicals and supplies. Okay, and Ms. Gallagher's worked on this. Mr. Andrews is also here to talk about it a little bit.
Sure. The relevant statutory authority requires that the township enter, or pass an ordinance which would authorize the intergovernmental agreement that would allow us to participate in, I believe, Hatfield Township's bidding process for pool chemicals and supplies this year. Mr. Andrews can speak to the actual dollars and cents that are involved, but the ordinance is relatively straightforward.
Okay, I'll go. Basically, this is a great opportunity, opportunity for us to save money on our pool chemicals. Basically, it's similar to like the Rhodes Hall Consortium that we would get in. We would get in with some other townships in Bucks and Montgomery County. There are six other ones right now that are in the consortium. And if we join a consortium, we could probably save about a dollar a gallon on chlorine. So we could probably cut our bill in half. Our mariatic acid, we could probably save about 10 to 15% also. This is a great opportunity for us going forward. I think it's a no-brainer, and I think, I think it's always a challenge at the pool, you know, to save some money. And I just think it's something, you know, we need to move forward on.
Okay, comments or questions?
Where do we get our chlorine from last year, do you know?
Baradelis.
And we've had them for a while.
It was Buckman's.
Oh, that's right, okay. I think they merged or something.
Yeah, I think they merged.
Baradelis always bid.
Buckman's basically subbed for them. They actually did the deliveries this year.
Got you, okay.
All right. And we know, we don't know who's going to be delivering for the consortium, though, go out to bid?
It'll go out to bid, yes. I'm sure Buckman's Baradelis is involved in that. There's another company, Mainline, you know, pool and supply.
That makes sense.
And we go with, and we go with the best quotes. We could, for chlorine, essentially have one company. We could have for mariatic acid, another company. We would manage it just like we do now. So I don't, I don't see any downside to it. We can, we can do this for a year. If we decide it's something we didn't want to do, it doesn't work out, which I don't think that would be the case, we can get out of the agreement with 30 days' notice. So I talked to many of the members in the consortium and they basically said, why are you waiting? So.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
All right, are there comments or questions? All right, so the ordinance that would be authorizing advertisement of just allows us to go into this agreement with these other municipalities?
Correct, and we've worked with the solicitor for Hatfield Township to make sure that the intergovernmental agreement that we have prepared is acceptable to all parties and everyone's on board at this point.
Okay.
So we can advertise this for approval at the next meeting.
Is it just for this year or it'll be for?
The ordinance will allow us to participate in this intergovernmental agreement going into the future. The agreement itself, I believe, is phased for one year with an automatic renewal unless we cancel.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, so we don't have to do an ordinance every year?
Correct.
Okay. All right, and this is just advertisement for now. So if everybody's, right, any public comment? Okay, is there a motion and authorize advertisement of the ordinance adopting a certain intermunicipal agreement for purchase of pool chemicals and supplies?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you.
And Ms. Gallagher as well, your work on that. All right, minutes for the next, or for our last meeting, January 20, 2015. Comments or questions, corrections on the minutes?
Excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pullen.
Anybody?
No.
If not, is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we did actually have an executive session before the meeting. I'll ask Ms. Gallagher to just sort of summarize briefly some, a couple of things we talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. The board did meet in a brief executive session this evening to discuss matters of litigation and matters of potential litigation.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Gray, you're up.
Yes, just a few items tonight. First item is in regard to a tow and collect machine. The board has asked to consider the purchase of a tow and collect machine for removing goose droppings at the community park from a company called Tow &amp; Farm. Upon purchase, the unit can be shipped within two or three days to the township. The specific model is a Tow &amp; Collect 1500. This has been reviewed by Joe Arneau, and he is comfortable with this purchase. The unit can be attached to one of our gators. The cost of the unit itself is $7,999, with shipping of $420. The total cost is $8,419. The board has asked to consider the purchase of a tow and collect machine.
Okay. This is something that came to our attention last year, actually, one of the, I think it was somebody from the Fall Soccer Club who came across this and found that it is used in a variety of different places. Unfortunately, we found out about it after kind of all the time period when it really would have been useful for us. We did have conversations with the company. The owner of the company, as well as the distributor, asked them about how well it would work with goose droppings. Actually, talked to a couple of people in Pennsylvania, farmers actually, who have, especially people who have raised horses, and it's used to pick up horse droppings. And they, they raved about the machine. And so we're hoping that it assists in cleaning up not only the township park, but would be able to be used. It's small enough that we could sort of put it in a trailer, take it to, you know, the baseball fields or any of the other parks and use it there. And it would just sort of basically goes and sweeps up, and then you just dump out, whatever you swept up is dumped out, and you just take it out again and just keep sweeping. It would be much more efficient than some of the things that have been used to try and, you know, clean up the messes that are out there. So comments or questions for Mr. Gray or for Mr. Andrews regarding this?
No.
And is there warranty on this?
Yeah, there is. That's another reason why we wanted, we waited because we wanted to make sure if it didn't work, we, you know, if we got it, we bought it in July and found out in March it didn't work, it'd be too late to return it. So, so, yeah, there is a warranty. You know, off the top of your head, I'm trying to remember what it is now.
Pete, do you know if there's a plan to dispose of the goose droppings?
Joe Arneau does have an area designated to put the droppings, and then he'll collect it at one time and dispose of it.
He didn't say specifically. He said that he has a spot outside of our general pathways where any people go, where he's going to collect it. I believe it is behind the dumpsters in Phase 1. But I'm not 100% sure, but that is where he was.
Kind of important, yeah.
There's not a lot of traffic there, so he is going to put an area specifically for that. And then once they get to a certain volume, they'll have it all removed. But it's out of, it's out of sight lines, it's out of traffic lines, and it's also in a safe place where kids are protected.
We could follow up on that one, Ed.
Yeah, just, yeah, having some discussion about some of the areas. Okay.
Just a procedure for, to be used. Is that by our Public Works Department?
Yeah, they would.
So they'll cut the grass and then they'll go out there and sweep the soccer field?
I think we were going, we were going to allow the Fall Soccer.
Soccer club to use it.
Yeah, they.
Because they play ball on Saturday mornings.
Right, they've, they've said they can, they'll be happy to use it. If we want to let them use it, they'll be happy to go out and do it, do the work for us.
And it'll be in one of the facilities, one of the locations down at the community park, so it'll be accessible.
Yeah, I'd say we'd let them use it.
Sure. Yeah, they don't mind doing it.
Yeah.
They already do it, basically.
They're already there.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right, if not, is there a motion then to approve the purchase of a tow and collect machine and the price of $84,19?
So moved.
Seconded.
Ms. Pullen?
Mr. Gallway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocker?
Yes. The township received a request from BJ's Wholesale Club to release two bonds that were required for construction of their gas station. These bonds were both dated September 16, 2005. Work on the project is complete, and T&amp;M has no issues with the release. The board has asked to consider releasing two subdivision bonds posted by BJ's in the amount of $301,153.05 and $57,332.
We've been holding that for 10 years?
That's what I was going to say. What's the problem? What was the problem?
They finally got around to asking for it back.
Yeah, they never asked for it.
Yeah, it's almost 10 years.
Can I ask, here's a question I've never thought about. Money like this sits, sits around, $358,000 and change. Is it an interest-bearing account?
No, this is a bond. If there's escrow money, it would sit in the accounts. But this is separate from cash escrow.
All right. Okay, just a thought. All right, is there a motion then to release the bonds as, you know, just stated in the January 29th, 2015, to BJ's Wholesale Club?
Just one more question, real quick.
Sure, sorry.
Do BJ's own that shopping center or they're just renting space?
Is, is that owned by the Goldenberg?
The Goldenberg.
Yeah, Goldenberg.
Because the road's a mess, that's all, all the way in front of the entrance, all the way past their gas station.
That's a triangle.
Yeah, that too.
They have a goose problem, too.
Just before we released the bond, I didn't know if that had anything to do with it.
Okay, I'll check it out. Okay. All right, any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to release the two bonds as outlined in the January 29th, 2015 memo?
So moved. Seconded.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocker?
Yes. The township received the application for the annual spring 2015 bare root tree offer. The bare root trees would be available in April for planting shortly thereafter. The township has done similar bare root tree programs in prior years, planting them throughout the township. Over 380 trees have been purchased through this program. An application is required for the program, and the shade tree committee is requesting 30 trees at a cost of $25 each for a total of $750. The board has asked to consider this purchase of the 30 trees for the tree revitalized program for $750.
Okay, comments or questions for Mr. Gray?
Just, just like to say that I've been to, I think, two or three shade tree meetings now, and they do a great job. They put a lot of time in. They're, they're excited, right? I mean, and just to note, we're getting these trees at, I think it's $25. The prices are amazing, and, you know, women put a lot of work behind the, and, and rows. So just like to thank them for their efforts.
My only concern is by the time we get them in the ground, it starts to get hot. Do you know, last year, did we plant in the spring?
Yeah, as soon as they come in, they usually come on a Friday or a Thursday, and Joey gets them out in the ground as quickly as they come in.
How was our survival rate?
Pretty well. We have to put gator bags on them, so we continually water them. John Gillis has a machine. He takes it around and puts the water in those gator bags.
Okay, all right, cool. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, is there a motion then to spend the $750 for the 30 trees offered through the bare root tree tree revitalized offer?
So moved. Seconded.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocker?
Yes. The township recently received a letter from Jesse Hill representing the Delaware Valley Vietnam Veterans Flag Memorial Committee. They are requesting a donation for this event. It will be held from Friday night to Sunday afternoon, June 12th to the 14th. In the 2015 budget, the township included $6,000 for this event. The board has asked to consider a $6,000 donation to Delaware Valley Vietnam Veterans Flag Memorial Committee.
Okay. This is, you know, obviously a great event that we have, and more and more people hopefully are becoming aware of it and attending it. You know, really a three-day event, a lot of Vietnam veterans, but even people that aren't veterans, family members come out planting really over 60,000 flags in our township park to commemorate those people who have lost their lives, given the ultimate sacrifice in defense of the country. And it's, you know, it's turned into quite an event. It attracts a lot of people, you know, even, obviously, you know, local politicians are there, but even people that are from all over the county are coming just to sort of, you know, have, have a place. And I know last year, I'm trying to think, one of the news stations covered it. Was it Channel 6 it was? I think Mr. Andrews said Channel 6 was there covering it. So it's, it is a great program. And it's one of these events like the St. Patty's Day Parade, like the Memorial Day Parade, like Falsington Day, that, you know, we like to help and support that does great things for our community. And the $6,000 donation is they've, they've included sort of an expenditure sheet, how they spend the money, and so we get a chance to see where it goes. Comments or questions from any board members?
No.
No. Is there a motion to donate $6,000 to the Delaware Valley Vietnam Veterans?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocker?
Yes. The township received a letter from Tom Hecker dated January 27th regarding the new Seaview Land Development Project, requesting an extension on the project's deadline until May 15th, 2015. The board has asked to consider this extension.
Comments or questions?
Mr. Sullivan, did you know anything about this? Are they moving forward?
I don't think we've heard anything for quite a while on this.
How long ago were they here? Eight months, nine?
More than that, I think. Yeah, it was like a year, year and a half.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. It's been a long time.
Yeah. I mean, are they, I don't know, they stuck in permitting maybe, or just, is it just a money issue? You know, not sure. Okay.
Not sure.
All right. Yeah, we haven't heard anything either. So Mr. Hecker was here earlier, I could have asked him, but didn't think of it at the time. Okay.
Thank you.
There's no more comments or questions? Is there a motion to grant the extension to May 15th?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
The township received a letter from Nathan Fox dated January 27th regarding 38 Cabot Boulevard. That's KPK Technologies requesting a 60-day extension on this particular project. They are set to expire on February 16th. 60 days would take them until April 17th. Board has asked to consider this extension.
Okay. Comments or questions?
No.
Is there a motion then to grant the extension to KPK till April 17th?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Finally, the township had a state of emergency beginning 12 noon Monday, January 26th through 6:00 PM Tuesday, January 27th due to the recent storm. Per the township ordinance, the manager may declare a local emergency subject to ratification by the board of supervisors at their next regularly scheduled meeting. At this time, the board has asked to approve this action proposed by the township manager.
Okay. Comments or questions?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Is there a motion then to approve the state of emergency that existed on Monday, the 26th of January, through Tuesday, the 27th?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Very lengthy meeting, some good things going on. You can see that happening. We'll close out with board comment. Okay? Mr. Rocko?
I guess two quick things. One, we do have a Facebook page. I mentioned that last meeting. We're up to 1,000-plus likes. So if you have Facebook, like Falls Township, to get the information. And then the second thing was with our two snowstorms, or at least one, we did put out that we're going to tow cars if they're on the road. And did we actually tow any?
Three.
Three, three cars. So I know in my neighborhood, everyone got their cars off the road. We didn't get the snow, they were saying we were, but I'm glad to see us doing that. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Dent?
Yeah, I'm just going to mention, we brought it up earlier, is this year's our fifth annual Cue for the Troops on Friday, June 5th, and Saturday, June 6th. 50 teams from all over the country come, and they compete for cash prizes, and we raise money for Liberty USO. Mr. John Kerner from Liberty USO come and give his speech many times, but it's a great event. You know, for the past five years, actually, this is our sixth year, the five years of myself and Matt Markie did everything by ourselves. It's a lot of work. I mean, it's almost a full-time job. Came on last year, it was Brian Andrews and Jessica Fox came, and it was a totally different game because we had so much help now. And this year's event is going to be the biggest and best yet. We're going to have a lot going on Friday night, June 5th, and the 6th as well, and right into the Family Festival, which is always a great time. Last year, we had to have thousands of people come to the park, literally thousands. So we're looking forward to a great year, and we also have a Facebook page as well as a website, cuefortethroops.com, where you can get all the information and schedule, which is updated regularly. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brasky?
No comment.
Mr. Gallaway?
No comment.
Okay. We did have a couple of, quite a few letters of interest come in to different, for different boards and authorities. We had two gentlemen here this evening, Mr. Nesteruk and Mr. Gartner, who both spoke about boards they wish to be appointed to. I don't know if board members would be open to sort of appointing a few people. I know Mr. Gartner, I believe, had put in for the Park and Recreation Board, and in taking a look, we do have one new term and one that expires in 2015. In addition to Mr. Gartner, there was a woman, Teresa Gregg, who also I spoke to, was interested in Park and Rec Board. And so we have two people looking at two different positions here. And I guess I'll make the motion here to appoint, we'll say, Ms. Gregg to the, I'll just say the one-year term, okay, which term that expires in 2015, to Park and Rec.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Is that what you want?
Well, I'll make the motion. That's fine, sorry. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Mr. Gartner to the Park and Rec Board for, it's a full term, a five-year term, I think it is, right? Or is it? Yeah, to a five-year term. I'll make that motion as well.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Nesteruk, who took the time to come here tonight, was interested in the Neighborhood Traffic Advisory Committee. He mentioned that after, he had noticed that there was an opening on TOFA, he is interested in TOFA as well. We've had quite a few letters of interest for the Township of Falls Authority. So I think he's still interested in the Neighborhood Traffic Advisory Committee. He may also be interested in the other one. I did tell him that we had quite a few letters of interest. So I'll make a motion to put him on the Neighborhood Traffic Advisory Committee, which the term, there's only one term left that ends this year. So I'll make that motion to put him on there for one, for the remainder of this year, the NTAC.
A second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the last one I'm just going to bring up is a young man who I actually taught several years ago. He's now, still lives in Falls Township. He's employed as mechanic at Davis Accura, but Mike Pallata, who's interested in the Historic Preservation Commission. I did mention to him that we'd just kind of given them a task, and I mentioned that we're, you know, and this again, this is, he's probably in his mid-20s, I guess, and I said to him that we were asked our, the neighborhood, our Historic Preservation Commission to take a look at the history of Falls Township, the book, The History of Falls Township, and add on to the end of that book, which was written in the early 90s, and add on the last next 20 years. And I mentioned the book. He said, oh, yeah, I have that. You know, and there, you know, aren't a lot of people, I think, that have copies of that, especially not, you know, 24-year-old kids. You know? He said, oh, yeah. He said, I'd love to do that. That sounds great. So, yeah, so he's perfect. So I.
He's an history teacher, huh?
Probably. Somewhere along the line. I don't know. Maybe after me, you know? But we do have, on Historic Preservation, two vacancies, each, I think, has a five-year term. So I'll make a motion to appoint Mike Pallata to the Historic Preservation Commission.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we do have quite a few other people on here. Some of these we can kind of come back to, you know, moving forward. And we'll obviously have to make a decision about TOFA at some point.
And thank you, Mr. Harvey, for calling these folks.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. And thank everybody for the hard work tonight. This is a long meeting. First, this might be the longest meeting you've ever had here, Mr. Brasky. Yeah, but when you combine geese with all the other kind of fun stuff that's going on.
I'm out of stamina here.
Right. So I want to thank everybody for all their time and efforts in putting this meeting together and making it happen. We had good public involvement tonight, especially with the St. Joe's issue, and I'm trusting people to stay focused on that. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.